...that all electronic devices are to be switched to non-audible during our committee meetings. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to today's agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair. There are four added delegation requests. Item 4.3 is from David Capazano, 150 Charlton Avenue West, Hamilton, in support of the redevelopment proposal for 210 Main Street East. That's for a future meeting. Item 4.4 is from former councillor and MPP Brad Clark of Maple Leaf Strategies, respecting item 5.1, to support the negotiated settlement between the Beasley Neighbourhood Association and Greenwin, Inc., regarding 192 Highway Houston Street North and 181 John Street North. That's for today's meeting. Also, item 4.5 is from Rob Fiedler of the Beasley Neighbourhood Association, also wishing to address committee regarding item 5.1 at today's meeting. Item 4.6 is from Ryan Deschamp of McMaster Student Union, respecting item 9.2, wishing to speak to the impact of the extension and permanency of the Mohawk College Co-Op Student Program on students. And that's for today's meeting. Then we have four added correspondence. Item 4.1, sorry, 5.1i is from Mark Noskowitz of Goodman's LLP, respecting item 5.1, the Committee of Adjustment Minor Variance Application for 192 Houston Street North and 181 John Street North, Hamilton, supported by the Planning and Economic Development Department, but denied by the Committee of Adjustment, PED 17172. And 5.1ii is from the Beasley Neighbourhood Association, also respecting item 5.1. 8.1i is from Dominic Marini, requesting that his appeal regarding the denial of assigned variance application, SV-16-020, for the property known as 442 Millen Road, Stony Creek, be further deferred to the November 14, 2017, meeting. And 9.1i is from Ann Mitchell, respecting item 9.2, and the Homecoming Street Party on Dalewood Avenue on September 30, 2017.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Moved by Councillor Johnson, seconded by Councillor Partridge. All in favour? Are there any declarations of interest this morning? Seeing none, thank you. Can I have an approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, September 19, 2017? Moved by Councillor Skelly, seconded by Councillor Connelly. All in favour? So we have delegation requests for 1, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, 4.5, and 4.6. May I have a motion to approve these delegation requests today? And 4.3 for a future meeting, sorry, 4.1 to 4.3 for a future meeting, and 4.4 to 4.6 for today's meeting? Moved by Councillor Partridge, seconded, sorry, I apologize. We don't have quorum. What happened?
What happened?
I tried fast enough. Geez.
Sorry.
Okay, we just lost quorum. Sorry, guys. Thank you, Ida. If any councillors are in the ante room that can hear this on the committee, if you'd come back in, we've lost quorum. Thanks, Ida. Green just stepped in. Okay, Ida, so where do you want me to go back to? May I have a motion to approve delegation requests, items 4.1 to 4.3, for a future meeting, and items 4.4 to 4.6, for today's meeting? Moved by Councillor Connelly, seconded by Councillor Skelly. All in favour? Harry, thank you. We're going to right on to item consent, item 5.1. And this is the Committee of Adjustments Minor Variance Application, HMA 16-1110, and HMA 1611, 192 Houston Street North, Hamilton, and 181 John Street North, Hamilton, supported by the Planning Committee Development Department, but denied by Committee of Adjustments War II. So may I have a motion to move consent item 5.1 to be considered after item 6.1, as we have received written correspondence, and we have two delegations regarding this matter? Moved by Councillor Green, seconded by Councillor Partridge. All in favour? Thank you. And we're going to go on then to the public hearings. We have Graham McNally, Chair of Hamilton Burlington Society of Architects, respecting Architectural Recognition Programme. This was approved at the September 19 meeting, so I'm going to have Graham, if you'd like to come down to the podium. And I'll remind you that you have a five-minute rule in speaking today. Good morning, sir.
It's switched my font, so it's very playful this morning. That's okay. Can anybody read it? Can you read up there? Okay, all right.
Oh, jeez.
So, that's pretty playful, eh?
Could be Comic Sans.
It could be Comic Sans. Maybe, anyways. That's all right. We can work with this. Okay, so, thank you for the opportunity to come this morning to speak to the Architectural Recognition Programme that the Hamilton Burlington Society of Architects is proposing. Just gonna give you, if this thing's, okay, we're gonna bounce. There we go. So the purpose of the programme we're discussing, or we're proposing, is to mount a plaque or a sign on new buildings to recognise the architect of the project. I think that increasingly, the public is becoming engaged with their city, interested in architecture, and curious about who is the author of the buildings that make up our city fabric? And why the city might be interested in a programme like this? There are many reasons, I think. So first of all is to capitalise on that interest in cities. Second, there's documented tourism that people are doing based on architecture and on city fabric. So in 2007, the Ministry of Tourism studied travel activities and motivations of Canadian residents, and found that 50% of people who were travelling for an overnight vacation listed visiting exhibits, architecture, or historical sites as an activity that prompted them to make that journey. Further, when you break down that 57%, 39% of those 57 specifically described strolling around a city to observe buildings and its architecture. So like I said, I think that the signs or this notification of who had authored the buildings is going to feed into that public interest, and can help to raise the profile of Hamilton's architecture. Finally, I think that in future generations, when people are wondering who's the author of that building, or who is the architect, a lot of the time these days, we're going into archival drawings at the archives in Ottawa, and trying to figure out who the architect was, if it's a sign on the side of the building. I think that's pretty straightforward. A precedent for a programme like this, Toronto has implemented a project, a programme like this. It's part of their site plan control. There's a requirement for buildings over 1,000 square metres, that's just over 10,000 square feet, to put a sign on their building about who the architect was. The minimum size of the sign is 20 centimetres by 30 centimetres, so we're not talking big signs, we're talking modest, discreet signs that would list who the architect was. Ottawa is also currently discussing a programme similar to ours, so we'd be the second city in Ontario to have a programme like this. And, very difficult to read with this font, but there's an article that somebody wrote, Bert Archer, on an article called Signing Architecture, and the sentence that I'd like to highlight says, "These plaques aren't about star architects, they're about architecture, the fact that humans are behind it, and the role it all plays, the role it all plays in our lives." So, at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody would have on our proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Graham. Well, within the time, appreciate that, and I'm going to turn to Councillor Partridge, then Councillor Farr.
Good morning, Graham. Welcome.
Thank you.
So I'm curious, can you define author?
Okay, so, every public building that's going to have an architect involved is going to have an architect of record, that's going to be the architect that stamped the drawings that went into City Hall. And that is something within the Ontario Association of Architects that is a defined sort of role. In Toronto, they have, they just, in their bylaw, it says, Architect of Record, or Principal Design Architect. And I think that sort of nuance is something we could probably get into with staff, if we were going to get that far.
Okay, thank you. And, now, you said "public" buildings. So this is public buildings only, not private buildings? Why the, well, first of all, is that correct?
Well, I think it could be all buildings over 1,000 square metres. I think that, you know, most often, buildings that are greater than 1,000 square metres are public buildings, unless they're large towers. 10,000 square feet, I mean, a factory would get there, but a lot of infill development and stuff like that are not, just not going to make that square footage.
So you're looking specifically for denoting "public" buildings only at this point?
I think, I think it should be open for discussion. I think that it's easier to say "public", because you don't have as many players arguing over authorship, and who gets credit, and all that stuff.
Well, there is that component. What about, now, so, if we go down this road, and I'm certainly, I don't object to it, but what about the cost, the financing, the funding? Would you be looking for the taxpayers to pick up that cost? Or would the architects be picking that up?
So I would say, in a building that's 1,000 square metres, you're talking tens of millions of dollars.
Right.
And a sign that's 20 by 30 is going to be hundreds of dollars. So, you could ask an architect if they want, I don't know. I think that's a detail that has to be worked out. I think in the grand scheme, it's going to be like, a fraction of a percentage of the cost of the overall construction. You could probably work it into the construction budget, and have the contractor pay for it, which means the public would then pay for it. But, I mean, in the grand scheme, it would be quite an insignificant cost. I think, one example that I think, I haven't, I didn't bring it with me, but the Four Seasons Centre for Performing Arts in Toronto, by Diamond Schmidt, has a sign, Diamond Schmidt 2006, and it's, it's just this big, it's on the corner from, I think it's on the Queen Street side.
Right.
Very subtle. And, you know, so we're not, it's not, we're not talking a big expense here.
Right. Do you know what Toronto does?
Do I know what they do for payment?
What, no, no, yeah, well, yes, for the funding part of it, because you mentioned that Toronto has this programme, Ottawa is considering it.
Right.
Do you know how Toronto covers it? Is it included in the tendering process? Is it?
I believe it's, so the approval of where the sign goes, what it looks like, and how big it is, is part of site plan.
Right.
I believe the payment would come from whoever is paying for the building.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate your presentation.
Appreciate your questions.
Councillor Farr.
Hey, Graham, sorry, I was a little late coming in. I appreciate a pass course, conversations I've had with you on this. I like what's before us. I have a motion, Madam Chair, and I'll review it in just a moment, and see if it's to the liking of our delegate here today. Have you ever, just the one question for you, Chair, have you ever talked about, I know in some cities, we were looking to do it too, in some areas, signage that has barcodes, and your smartphones connect to that signage, and then therefore get all sorts of information? Have you ever talked to your society about adding that element, or something similar, through you, Chair?
We haven't. I certainly think it could be part of the discussion. My initial reaction is that technology changes, and QR codes might go away in five years, I don't know, but, but certainly it could be part of the discussion. I think, like, if you define sign, then it can be anything that, you know, if you define simply the size, then it can be whatever the designer, or whatever the team thinks is appropriate. And then if they think it's worthy of a QR code and a website, then you could certainly set that up.
Right. I was actually hesitant to even bring it up, because I figured there's a good chance that barcodes are already obsolete, but, thanks. Finally, the motion reads, I receive you, seconded by Councillor Johnson, and B, that the Hamilton Burlington Society of Architects be requested to work with their membership to identify a preferred approach to recognising the contribution of architects to significant build projects in the city of Hamilton, and submit their proposals to city staff. C, that city staff be directed to consider this approach, and bring forward recommendations as part of the ongoing review and update to the city's site plan guidelines, through you, Chair. Does that sound reasonable?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the time, and good to see you again.
So your motion's on the floor, councillor, moved by yourself, seconded by councillor Aidan Johnson. And if I can just relinquish the chair real quick, I'd like to speak to it. Thank you, councillor Johnson. Certainly, Graham, thank you for being here.
Pleasure.
And certainly a great initiative. I believe, if I'm remembering correctly, most of our buildings in Stony Creek, are public buildings anyways, all recognise the architects, the engineers, and everything. They are on plaques that are on these buildings.
I have seen that at Valley Park.
Yes, they have. And, you know, I'm really proud of that, because you're right, you walk into a building, it's nice to see, and especially being on Heritage Committee, we get a lot of information of different architects, older architects, Balfour, et cetera, and the buildings that were built out there. So it's really nice to say, let's have some recognition going forward, because I think the future generation would appreciate that we've kept some, some information available and handy to them. So I'm certainly very supportive of this. So I'll take the chair back. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we do have the motion for us. Any other questions? Seeing none? All in favour?
Carried.
Carried. Thank you. And the opposed, seeing none? Unanimous. There you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So now I have, oh, I have to receive the deleg, sorry, I was busy.
That was my motion.
It's in the motion? Okay, so Ida, you have to, that the motion all is included to receive the delegation? Thank you. So I want to be sure, because Ida's going to come back at me later. Anyways, now we have item 5.1, is the Committee of Adjustment Minor Variance Application, that I read off earlier, HMA 16110, HMA 16111, 192 Houston Street North, and 181 John Street North. I have written comments that we've received from Mark Noskowitz of Goodman's LLP and the Beasley Neighbourhood Association. We now have this before us. May I have, first, to have a motion to receive the added written submissions? Moved by councillor Farr, seconded by councillor Connelly. All in favour? And I have two delegations that wish to come down to speak, so I'm going to ask councillor, our former councillor Brad Clark, Maple Leaf Strategies, if you wish to come down.
I'm not that old.
No, but it doesn't have a red light.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Good morning, Madam Chair and councillors. I am the principal consultant for Toronto Office of Maple Leaf Strategies. It's a national public affairs research and government relations firm. A little over 30 days ago, the Beasley Neighbourhood Association retained me to research the two minor variance applications. Any applicable municipal and provincial policies provide advice and facilitate negotiations with Greenwin, Inc. I would, I was also advised by the BNA, that failing that successful outcome, that they were prepared and willing to attend the Ontario Municipal Board. During our first meeting with the proponent, both parties agreed to park any issue that was not a legitimate planning issue, and subject to the hearing at the Ontario Municipal Board. The decision enabled both parties to really concentrate on the key planning issues in dispute. After negotiating a mutually agreeable position, we met with the city's planning and legal staff, as well as councillor Farr and Mayor Eisenberger, to explain the proposed settlement. Today, we are asking the planning committee to approve, to support the negotiated agreement, and direct staff to present the proposed settlement at the Ontario Municipal Board. The settlement specifies the number of three-bedroom units will be set at 35. That is an increase of 25 from the original minor variance applications. The number of two-bedroom units will not be less than 25% of the total of all units with the subject properties. We are pleased to publicly report that Greenwin, Inc. has agreed that no existing tenants would be displaced as a result of this redevelopment. On this point, I do wish to extend my personal thanks to Mr. Green and Ms. Boyce. Further, the Beasley Neighbourhood Association and I have agreed to hold meetings with the tenants, to ensure that they understand the outcome of this agreement, their rights and their obligations. Madam Chair, I wish to reference the last paragraph of the jointly signed letter on the BNA letterhead, which you received already. Both parties are respectfully asking the city of Hamilton to conduct a feasibility study for Maiden-Hamilton family-friendly housing policy that would explore means of incorporating consideration for families in future development proposals for rental units, condominiums, and affordable housing. Both parties would be pleased to participate in the consultation and the development of such a policy, and look forward to councillor Farr's motion being presented. Madam Chair, that's the conclusion of my report, and I'll take any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Any questions of the presenter? Councillor Farr.
Always on time, still, well-pressy down, well-put, much appreciated. I just wanted to give you an opportunity, former councillor Clark, former cabinet minister Clark, through you, Chair, to maybe just expand on the mood of the negotiations.
They were friendly. The negotiations were respectful. The, we had four, I guess, three meetings in total, and then the final one with our staff, with the city staff. It was approximately six, maybe seven hours of discussions. There was a myriad of issues that we had to deal with at the very beginning, in the first meeting, and a number of them were simply parked, pushed to the side, because they were not planning issues that we would be able to argue before the Ontario Municipal Board. Once we were able to do that, we could actually concentrate on my client's concerns about a family-friendly policy, about making this building family-friendly for the community. And, and the company, Greenwin, really did understand the concerns. I can tell you that we had a great deal of discussion about the fact that there was no policy in Hamilton. So in essence, we were discussing and making decisions on this subject property that other developers wouldn't necessarily be doing. And, and hence, that's why the, the request for a family-friendly policy study was proposed.
Almost through you, Chair, a site-specific example of what we can achieve city-wide. Through you, Chair, do you agree?
That would be, Madam Chair, a very good way of putting it. It, it is a reasonable, pragmatic solution to the redevelopment of these apartment buildings. The two subject properties were very much in need of this. And the agreement that was garnered from Greenwin, not to displace any of the remaining tenants while this redevelopment was occurring, I think was very magnanimous on the part of the proponent. Certainly not necessary, certainly not a planning issue, but in the interest of community relations, they felt that it was something they wanted to do.
Just prior to the, thanks, Brad, the meeting today, we collectively met, it was, I assume, and expect the last meeting that I, I will be party to with, specific to this issue, over probably two, three years now. You know, it's been a bit of a rollercoaster ride, as I mentioned a little earlier, or a little later last week, when we all got together in room 222, in advance of this meeting, as I say, and, and it couldn't have landed more smoothly, and, you know, hats off and credit to the BNA, who brought a well-versed, polished facilitator, who has a great deal of knowledge in terms of governance and policy, obviously, for anybody who sat on the planning committee in the past, and who went toe-to-toe, in an amicable way, for about eight hours total, with another old friend of council, and former mayor Larry De Ani, who was representing the other side. So I'm quite pleased to see just how this has finally come to an amicable conclusion, hopefully with support of the motion that I'll bring forward at the appropriate time. We, we can avoid the OMB altogether, and, and that was the whole, that was the whole point from the beginning. Thank you, Brad, and much appreciated. I look forward to, I look forward to moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor, and certainly thank you for recognising former mayor Larry De Ani. I was going to do that next, appreciate, he's also here in the audience on this item. Councillor Green, you're next.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Just through you, to the presenter, acknowledging the complexity of this kind of trend, the shifting trend of capital projects being at end-of-life cycle, needing renewal, understanding displacement, and the effects of gentrification, the crisis of low income, deep affordable housing, what, what did you take away from this in terms of, like, best practices, learnings, being able to navigate communities through this process?
The negotiations between the proponent and the Beasley Neighbourhood Association, I, I really did find that they, it went very well. It was a bit of a learning process for the Beasley Neighbourhood Association in terms of that type of mediation. I found that the proponent really was sincere about redeveloping the building in an appropriate way, making it healthy, clean, safe for the tenants, working with the tenants, developing community relations programmes. The item councillor that I found was lacking was some policies that the city could put in place. We, we did spend a little bit of time talking about the family-friendly policies, family-friendly housing policies that are in place in New Westminster, Vancouver, and Toronto. We really do believe, and I have spoken with Mr. Robichaud about it, that a Maiden-Hamilton family-friendly housing policy is prudent, and would also help with the discussions that this committee and council will be having with regards to inclusionary zoning. So I, I think this dialogue that occurred between the BNA, perhaps is exemplary for other neighbourhood associations when they're dealing with planning processes. It is far better to sit down and find common ground than it is to simply oppose on ideals.
And certainly respecting the fact that you are here representing the Beasley Neighbourhood Association, I can understand why that framework, or why that would be present for you. I, I actually take a different view. I think that if anything, this is a learning for the developer, that in taking on these types of redevelopment and renewal projects, they're not just beholden to the financial stakeholder, that now in this new framework, they have social stakeholders in every neighbourhood that they go to. And I know that councillor Farr's been working on this for quite some time, and certainly look forward to hearing his motion, and certainly appreciate you being able to help them navigate. I'll say on the record, Madam Chair, the Beasley Neighbourhood is a very sophisticated, nuanced, intersectional, from my opinion, neighbourhood association who takes into considerations all of the people, residents, that are in their communities, whether they're at the table or not, and it's rare to see that. It's rare to see that. It's often the case, Madam Chair, that neighbourhood associations are framed in the backdrop of a ratepayers, or, you know, a homeowners' association, so to see this is, is exciting. And I think, again, messages to, hopefully, potential future policies around development, that, particularly with the OMB in uncertainty, that increasingly, developers are going to be forced to recognise the social shareholders of their communities. So I just want to thank you for being here today. I, I will say that I was shocked that you were doing this inner-city work. It's great to see, and, and certainly hope you stay on this side of the fence, because I never like seeing you on the other side of the fence. So having said all of that, I appreciate you being here, and, and look forward to the outcome. Bye for now.
Madam Chair, if I just may, thank you, councillor. I sincerely appreciate your kind remarks. With regards to the, the negotiations that occurred, and the maturity of the BNA, you're absolutely correct. It is a mature organisation. They acknowledged and recognised early on that the proponent has a right to develop their property within the guidelines of the municipality, and they also acknowledged that the value question, the economic question, is very important to the proponent. So the negotiations that we had had to, in fact, recognise both the social improvements, but also that the company needed to make a reasonable amount of money to keep the project moving forward. So I, I think it was very well. In terms of changes that are coming, 100%. Councillor, with, with changes to the OMB, this type of discussion, these types of negotiations would be needed to move developments forward, and it would be better to do them early in the process, as opposed to just holding a planning meeting and trying to ram it through. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, everyone. With that, my motion to receive the delegation, Mr. Clark, moved by councillor Farr, seconded by councillor Green. All in favour?
Carried.
Thank you, and I have Rob Fiedler of the Beasley Neighbourhood Association to come forward. Thank you.
Okay. Good morning, Madam Chair and councillors, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you today. Brad Clark, who we retained about a month ago to assist us in the matter before you, has outlined for you the settlement reached between the Beasley Neighbourhood Association and Greenwin, with regard to the latter's plans for 181 John and 192 Houston. So I'd like to keep my comments brief, and not repeat what has already been said about the particulars of the settlement, other than to convey that the Beasley Neighbourhood Association is pleased to have arrived at a mutually agreed-upon solution that meets the needs of both parties, and includes a commitment not to displace remaining tenants. I want to emphasise, on behalf of the Beasley Neighbourhood Association, that I hope today we turn the page and start a new day, especially between ourselves and Greenwin. To reach a settlement, we travelled a long ways in a short time, and surprised even ourselves. It takes two to tango, so I'd like to acknowledge and thank the people from Greenwin for listening to our concerns and taking to our concerns and taking them seriously. A compromise means talking about wants and needs and figuring out how to arrive at a solution both parties can live with. Recently, in an email exchange over, or over social media, a community member noted, "It's important to her to ensure that as our area changes, as it undergoes revitalization, it is important for those of us who are relatively comfortable and well-housed to put our efforts toward protecting those who are more vulnerable in our community." And to stabilize their circumstances, including the ability for them to access or maintain suitable and affordable housing. People who have followed or are aware of this file know that beyond the particulars, we're in the midst of a housing crisis for some. We're also in the midst of remaking our downtown and many inner-city neighborhoods. We're seeing investment and uplift after a period of relative decline. It is important that we not ignore the hard edge of this for some. Revitalization doesn't need to mean displacement, and there are opportunities for us now, in the present, to ensure that positive changes underway are broadly and equitably enjoyed. From the Beasley Neighborhood Association's perspective, this is an important goal and something that in a myriad of ways we seek to achieve. It is something we look to you as councillors to partner with us in. So we ask you to support this settlement and to consider, at a future meeting, the Beasley Neighborhood Association and Greenwood's joint request for the city to conduct a feasibility study for a family-friendly housing policy to explore how to incorporate consideration for families and larger households in future development proposals for rental units, condominiums, and affordable housing. Councillor Farr, our Ward Two councillor, has indicated he plans to give notice of his intention to move a motion requesting such a feasibility study be conducted at a future Planning Committee meeting. We wish to thank councillor Farr for his support and efforts. I don't need to go into detail, but he has taken a long interest and has been active on this file and the issues that it entails. I'd also like to thank Brad Clark. His role in this is quite integral in helping us come to a settlement. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Appreciate that, the comments. And with that, councillor Farr.
Through you, Chair. Rob, you are educated in the field of planning. Share with us your recent achievements.
Can you be more specific?
Just how educated are you?
Oh. Are you trying to make me bashful?
No, just a little.
So a few months ago, I successfully defended a PhD dissertation on post-war suburbanization. And--
So we're not dealing with a chump here. Through you, Chair, we're dealing with Fielder, who has been--
As opposed to?
No reference to the previous speaker. Chair, Rob, we've had many dealings in the past. I should note, too, that Rob is a resident of the North End Neighborhood Association. The co-chair is up there, Mike Barelli, of the Beasley Neighborhood Association, also a resident of the North End Neighborhood Association. And that doesn't take away with the fact that generally, on the Wednesday nights when council happens, around that table are a boatload of Beasley Neighborhood residents, a very inclusive group. I'm always impressed, have been from day one, from the very first Beasley Neighborhood meeting I ever went to, when we were talking about building a charter. That charter was built. It was the first of its kind in Canada, and it's fairly recently been reestablished in that community. And it speaks to all the great things that we're seeing. And it's truly the inspiration behind a lot of the great community work that we see in that neighborhood, from the residents and from the nearby residents and former residents like Charlie and Mike and others that dedicate so much time and energy. And when they do, on issues like this, it's clear to me that there's policies, there's programs, there's initiatives that will benefit more than just that one neighborhood. It's truly remarkable, and it's been fun to be part of it, working with people like Rob. And with that, through you, Rob, it was probably four months ago that you were part of-- we meet quarterly. We try to meet four times a year, myself, my office, with all the reps from the neighborhood associations. And there was a motion passed, giving me pretty much my marching orders to look at this. This was about four months ago. Since, you and I have somewhat worked together. We have, maybe we're at a draft point. But can you talk about what it is that was stated in that room, some four months ago over here in 264, with respect to what's before us here today? Through you, Chair.
Okay, so before this particular Ward Two community council meeting, starting last November roughly, running through to June, I was the parent rep for the Bonnetto School on the district school board's accommodation review, looking at nine schools in the West Hamilton City area. And so through that, we became aware of not just uneven utilization across our area of study, but that the North End Beasley, and to a lesser extent Corktown Stinson, had under enrollment in their local schools. And that the trend lines going forward didn't seem to be improving despite all of the discussions about intensification. And so we were interested in ensuring that as we see development, that we get some family units to ensure that our facilities are well-used, which conforms to places to grow on the provincial policy statements objectives. And so we started talking as a group about how we might do that. And through that, we started looking at policies from other places that have sought to do this. I don't know that we're at the point of a draft policy. I think we have done background research to look at how we might do that, which is why it would be important to do a feasibility study.
It was clear from that first meeting where we brought it up, and thanks for the brief history lesson, that it's a unified effort from all six neighborhood associations. There's six neighborhoods and six neighborhood associations in Ward Two, as I've mentioned in the past many times. And the marching orders were clear as well. And so you also, through you, Chair, took a trip. I mean, former councillor Clark, former minister Clark referenced Westminster, Vancouver, and Toronto. You were out west this summer, and we have communicated on, actually, probably to a very brief extent so far, but we will continue to communicate, on what they're doing there. In a nutshell, through you, Chair, what is it you found there, and how can that maybe be beneficial should today's motion, today's notice of motion be passed as a motion in two weeks' time?
Okay, so first, I'll say that I'm a Hamiltonian by choice, not by birth. So I was out on the West Coast visiting my extended family, which still live there. I grew up in Surrey, but I have a lot of relatives in the Burnaby, New Westminster area. And so while I was there, I arranged to speak to the mayor and chief, acting chief planner of the city of New Westminster, as well as someone in the planning department in the city of North Vancouver, both places that have policies. What I heard from them was a sort of, a history of how they got to where they were. So it took a number of steps to come to it. But it was really precipitated by the arrival of applications with very few larger units. So I think that the mayor referenced his council sort of being shocked at a proposal that had mostly studio apartments and one bedrooms. And so they were concerned that they're in a somewhat different situation than us. They're a smaller, like geographically smaller, older city that has to grow up and has been growing up for about 20 years since the arrival of their Skytrain. And so the mayor himself moved from a house to a four-bedroom apartment a number of years ago. And so he was describing in his comments to me what is needed to make this work. Why would someone want to live in high-density surroundings? And what makes that a viable choice? And then the other side of it being, how do you actually get supply?
We'll continue to maybe work on some draft. Again, this is the result of a collective wish from all six neighborhood associations. I've heard from, well, two, and I'm going to count BNA three, in the last few days in anticipation of the delegation here today, and hopefully the resolve to an issue, Madam Chair, that began on a very cold February night in 2015. I don't know if I've been in a more, well, it's among the most contentious community meetings I've ever participated in. There was about 65 residents from both Houston and John. And again, to be here today, it's night and day, and it's thanks to people like Rob, Michael, and others with the BNA, who worked very closely with some vulnerable residents that night, and have got us to this point. So thank you very much for your delegation, Rob. I continue to look forward to working with you. It was a great conversation we had last night. I have to tell you, there was a little part of me that was paying attention to the Chiefs game as well, but I had the sound down. I can multitask, as I've told you in the past. So I move to receive the delegation.
Thank you, councillor. I have councillor Green, though, on the speakers list.
All ready to make my comments and motions.
Okay, thank you. And with that, move to receive the delegation, moved by councillor Farr, second by councillor Collins, all in favor. Thank you, Rob, very, very much. And again, congratulations. I know how difficult that is. And coming back, councillor Farr, your motion, sir?
I have two. The other I'm going to leave as a notice. This one, though, speaks to what has been presented to us today by both delegates, and with respect to the issue regarding the Committee of Adjustment Minor Variants Application. So Item 5.1, HM/A-16;110, and HM/A-16;111, 192 Houston Street North, Hamilton, and 181 John Street North, Hamilton, supported by the Planning and Economic Development Department, but denied by the Committee of Adjustment, that the city solicitor be directed to support the settlement as described in the letter dated September 28, 2017, from Goodman's Barristers and Solicitors regarding the appeals of minor variance applications, HM/A-16;110, And very briefly, again, this concludes what started out to be a very contentious episode at the New Beasley Rec Center way back in February 2015. It was widely reported on at the time, and it brought to light, I think, for a lot of people, the issue that we heard about today. And hopefully, we will address in the near future with the notice of motion that I intend to leave as a notice of motion, and specifically as it relates to larger-size units or family-size units. Rob Fielder, our last delegate, had mentioned his role, and he underscored, he underplayed it, representing the school board parent group that this time around, when it came to AR accommodation review, I think they did a much better job, the Hamilton Wentworth District School Board, in engaging with parents of schools. We know that a priority now from that engagement sees a very unique community hub, unique to Hamilton, and maybe unique to the province, being requested by the Hamilton Wentworth District School Board. Specifically, it's a request for funding to make the McDonald Precinct a reality, bring two schools, elementary schools, together there, and a multitude of partners who the board and our city staff, including at the table, our city manager, myself, and others, are going to be part of that community hub. It was a tremendous effort, and it was led initially by the citizens. And so it was really great to see that effort come to fruition, to have that official request from the Hamilton District School Board. And ultimately, it stemmed from a declining enrollment in the inner city, and a declining enrollment not just downtown, but Ward One, Ward Three. And with the current provincial formula that really just looks at funding based on how many butts are in the seat, and not taking into account all those other eventualities in inner cities, you know, it was really a snowball out of control. And if we can, through our own City of Hamilton planning policy, tackle that issue of declining enrollment, we ought to. And what we have here today is two things. One, a community that banded together, that supported their fellow residents, some with challenges even in speaking English, asking them to hold out, asking them to not take offers to move. So their larger bedroom apartments, which are obviously in the decline, and not clearly the kinds of units that developers today want to build in this and other cities, asking them to hold out, sharing with them that we're going to fight for you, and ultimately leading to a resolve here today that shows just that, with an extra 25 larger units, three-bedroom units, and certainly, I think, 25% of all the units in Houston and John Street being two bedrooms. They've done just that. And in turn, and to conclude, they've also addressed the declining enrollment issue, because if we have more opportunities for families to live in these areas, we are tackling that issue directly, and hopefully getting more and more families living in these great communities of increasing vitality, and bringing the classroom sizes up to the extent where we don't have to have these debates every four or five years in accommodation reviews. And in fact, I'd like to see our policies help the board decide on how many portables to build, and not how many schools to close. Thank you, and thank you for the work of the committee.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Green?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And I'm reminded of the video that's circulating around the internet about the introduction of wolves into ecosystems, where they are able to control the animal populations that eat the vegetation, which create erosion, which actually changes the river patterns. It's a very interesting video on ecosystems. And I think about policy and the decisions that we make around this table, not just on-site specific situations like this, in 181 John, which I remember attending the rally hosted by the Somali community at the time, I believe. And I think about the decisions that we make around this table that have these lasting impacts on our social ecosystem here in the city. And I think what I'm most excited about in councillor Farr's leadership and work, and certainly led by the Beasley Neighborhood Association, is the citywide application of this policy eventually. I see, and I know councillor Partridge, in the work that she's doing in Flamborough, talking about deep affordability, understanding the housing crisis, knowing that home ownership is increasingly out of the reach for not some, but many Canadians and Hamiltonians that are here. So again, I just want to take a moment and reflect on the fact that we, as a corporation, are guided by the mission to be the best place to raise a child and age successfully. And I think that in not putting into enforcement, into code, into bylaw, into planning, this idea of multi-unit family accommodations for rentals, we are going to find ourselves in a crisis, that I'll be speaking about later on, of only growing proportions, and, you know, 10 cities and families being displaced is a very real thing for us. So I appreciate the work. I know that the conversation has come up time and time again as it related to the West Harbour. But you think of that ecosystem, and you think of the way that one policy will impact another, the idea of the closure of schools. I can tell you this, Madam Chair, that in my community, one of the hottest, fastest-growing gentrified neighborhoods, and I don't say that necessarily in a great way, in terms of who's being displaced, schools are always a consideration. And for a long time, the school board had put in abeyance any type of capital investment into Adelaide, Memorial. Cathy Weaver got rebuilt, but many of our schools, you know, have long since gone because of the policies that we had around this table on not enforcing or not applying deep affordability and family-size units into the neighborhood. So I say that to say thank you to those that are present, thank you to the proponents on both sides of the fence, Mr Clark and Mr DeAnnie, as their experience certainly guided a more amicable way, and hopefully will provide for a citywide application under councillor Farr's leadership here around this table. So I'm excited about that, and I hope to see it applied right across the city. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. So councillor Farr, your motion's on the floor. Moved by councillor Green. Thank you. All in favor?
Yes.
And you're going to bring your notice of motion later on in the meeting?
Sure.
Thank you, sir. So with that, that passes.
Just, may I read it? It's very short, and there's a number of people from the community here--
Sure, go ahead. Let's do it now. Please, that's why I'm asking. Is that okay, Ida?
Sure.
Yep, go ahead.
So I would move, this is going to remain as a notice, to allow some delegates to come before us in a couple of weeks--
Just before you start, councillor, Ida's handing it out for all of us.
Oh, great, yeah. I had sent that to Ida a little earlier. I appreciate that. That the appropriate City of Hamilton staff be requested to conduct a feasibility study with appropriate public consultation for the development of a family-friendly housing policy that would explore means of incorporating consideration for families in the future development proposals of rental units, condominiums, and affordable housing. And that'll stay as a notice.
And that's staying as a notice of motion. Thank you very much, everyone. So everyone's had a chance to hear that. And-- So everyone's had a chance to hear that, and we voted on the motion. I'll just say it again, all in favor?
Chair.
Carrie, thank you, everyone. Just being sure for the record, because I've just been running around a bit. And certainly, I do want to commend councillor Farr and everybody involved in resolving this, that it's not an O and B fight, because we know how much time and effort and costs are involved in that, so whenever we can avoid it, it's always wonderful.
I mean, the SPRC, the Hamilton Legal Clinic, Dave Brabody, City Housing, myself, there were some other folks that were at that first meeting that has been referenced a couple of times this meeting. So hats off to all the partners that work with the Neighborhood Association, including councillor and some city staff.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much, everyone. So with that, we're going to go on to 9-2, which is expanding and making permanent the Mohawk College Co-op Student Program for Communities around McMaster University. I think councillor Aiden Johnson, you have a motion on this?
Yes.
And I have a delegation, I think, a written delegation.
And sorry, Madam Chair, and perhaps through to Madam Clerk, just to confirm how the agenda is working, we're doing delegation first and then my motion, or what is the order, please?
The delegation is just written. Is there someone here, Ida, that we're aware of? Thank you. Okay, so we'll recognize, I'm just, I'm wondering if the motion should be put on the floor so we know what the delegation's coming down on, or... That's fine, we can have the delegation come forward.
Yeah, thanks.
But we have to have a waive the rules, because this is not Ann Mitchell's, is it correct? I have a written correspondence on this from Ann Mitchell.
Yeah, we need to receive that.
Right? But the delegation request is Ann Mitchell? No.
No.
So we have to move...
The delegation was approved. The delegation request was approved at the start of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. So we can receive the written comments from Ann Mitchell, moved by councillor Aiden Johnson, second by councillor Conley, all in favor? And so I have Ryan respond? Ryan, come on down, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
If I read ahead fast enough in my roadmap, I would have picked it all up, sorry. And Ryan, if you'd like to introduce who's also with you?
So this is Stephanie Bertolo. Okay, so hello, everyone. My name is Ryan. I am the Vice President Education of the McMaster Students Union, and this is Stephanie, our Associate Vice President of Municipal Affairs. I'm excited and grateful for the opportunity to speak to you today. We are here today representing McMaster students to provide information about the realities and experiences of students who are on the receiving end of this bylaw program. This program was set up to fail. The failure of this program is exacerbated in its expansion. We are here to advise councils to take a truly proactive approach, one that balances education with the enforcement to first-time renters, transient student population, and students who are living precariously. This program further worsens our living conditions and leaves students having to sacrifice numerous things to pay fines. This motion also undermines the MSU's continuous efforts, places an increased burden on students, and tarnishes the City of Hamilton's relations with current and prospective students of McMaster.
In theory, council may have believed that the fines from this program would have been paid for by landlords. Indeed, the fines do go on their property tax roll. In reality, however, landlords are passing the responsibilities and the fines on to students. As evident from testimony from several students who have paid upwards of $750, not knowing their rights, they often comply. This is not only burdening financially strained students, but it is worsening the problem. This is another reason that this program is flawed. Students do not know their rights as tenants and are ill-informed about necessary and relevant city bylaws. While this program is marketed as proactive, we seemingly have differing definitions of the word. In this program, proactive is seen as residents not having to report bylaw infractions, but to us, proactive would be working towards not acquiring fines in the first place. This requires the program to take a less punitive approach, providing more education to first-time renters. A great example of this is the MSU Student Community Support Network, which the MSU is committed to expanding this year. Through our president, we have clearly communicated this to councillor Johnson, our desire to expand this program. This is raised in private conversation at Lock Street, again at meetings on campus, and recently at an AWCA meeting. The councillor is well aware of this superior program in development by the student union. He has not explained to council or to the MSU why his program is better than what the student union is already developing.
The approach that is being taken is treating students like a burden on the city. We understand why you might think this, given the public incident on Dalewood Avenue this past weekend. But to address that point before we continue, this bylaw enforcement program has absolutely no relation to annual incidents such as homecoming, and we are working very closely with the university, the surrounding communities, and Hamilton Police to address these issues as we do every year. This motion was brought forward well before homecoming, and mention of homecoming during this debate and questions are truly a derailment from this argument because of its irrelevancy to the matter at hand.
The councillor has not provided any other relevant information to this program that he's looking to expand. He has not provided any substantive information as to the types of tickets given out, the number of repeat offenders, and the times that they are giving out. The only information we have received is that this program pays for itself. This program is also compromising student retention efforts and affecting students' perception of Hamilton. I'll point to the example of a viral GoFundMe page, which a student has circulated on social media to fundraise for their $745 grass-cutting ticket. What do you think this message has sent to students regarding the city's reputation as a place to live? The fact that this program pays for itself is a reason that it should be discontinued, because it is not changing student behavior. If we were seeing less bylaw infractions as a result, we would consider it successful. It seems like what we are seeing is increased infractions and the need to have more untrained officers paroling neighborhoods. This has not been a successful program, and council only being expanding a program that has been designed to fail.
Finally, we question the integrity of these tickets. These bylaws are being forced by Mohawk College students who are still learning about the law. How can people who are still learning about the law effectively enforce it? Overall, this cost-cutting mechanism has weakened the integrity of the city's law enforcement. If council does decide to pass this motion, we will understand the message that is being sent, and we are disappointed that this motion was not discussed with the MSU prior to it being submitted, despite a supposedly joint commitment between councillor Johnson and the MSU. In this matter, we cannot stand for profits being generated off of our students. We will inform students of their legal rights and facilitate them accessing legal aid if these tickets continue to be unfairly allocated to them. However, as council, you know that there are so many possible alternatives, and as always, the McMaster Students Union is more than willing to work with the city to explore and implement these positive alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a speakers list. Councillor Green?
I'll yield the floor to councillor Johnson.
Councillor Aiden Johnson?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And through you, the MSU representatives who have come forward are an example of why we should respect the MSU, and why we should have, why we should have great hope for the future of politics. We've heard a very compelling case brought forward by the MSU about the interests of students, and I'm going to respond with a couple of counterarguments, and my hope is that, as I speak, one of my core convictions will be clear, and that is the conviction that MSU is playing a very positive role in the conversation right now, and that this is an extremely complex topic, one that the MSU leaders are grappling with very ably. So, sort of a scattershot approach to the arguments that we've heard, I'm just going to go through and try to address what I've heard today. Overall, what I heard in the delegation is that the program was designed to fail. The program was not designed to fail. The program has been a success in that it is leading to improvements in hygiene in the neighborhood, it is leading to improved enforcement of law in the neighborhood, and I count those as successes. The real problem that we have in the McMaster neighborhoods, Madam Chair, is absentee landlordism, and we need a variety of policy approaches to get at the toxic problem of absentee landlordism. One of those solutions that we as a city have the power to implement is landlord licensing, and we'll be returning to landlord licensing this year in the context of our budget discussions. Improved bylaw enforcement is another tool that the city has in order to address the glaring hygiene problems, health and safety problems, that exist in our McMaster neighborhood that bylaw can help us to get at. The students are complaining with justice that landlords are unfairly downloading the costs associated with bylaw enforcement to students. I am holding my tongue slightly, Madam Chair, in that now is not the time for me to start offering legal counsel to the MSU or to the student community about tenant rights and about landlord obligations. It is the case that I have offered throughout my time as councillor to work with the MSU on a project they refer to in their delegation, which is a project that I think has become even more important in the present moment, the project of legal education for students. And I would like to circle back, this delegation is an opportunity for me to circle back to the MSU and reiterate that offer. It seems clear to me that this motion, and incidents over the weekend, and the expanding conversation about problems in the McMaster neighborhood, require a true effort of legal education within the student community. I am a tenant myself, Madam Chair. My husband and I cannot afford to buy a house in the ward I've been elected to represent, therefore, we rent. And the topic of tenant rights is one that is near and dear to my heart as a tenant. And it is certainly the case that it would be a privilege to work with the student community in order to educate students about their tenant rights. Landlords have very deep obligations. It is a privilege to own property, and it is a privilege to lease property, to be a landlord. It is particularly a privilege to be a landlord providing housing for students at a very key moment in their lives, when they are completing and acquiring education. And it is an even deeper privilege than that to be a landlord providing housing for lower-income students. And Madam Chair, I want to make clear that I've understood one of the most important ethical arguments that our student delegation has brought forward today. There are different kinds of student poverty. There's the student poverty of students from higher-income households who are currently completing an undergraduate degree and are short on cash, and will soon be entering the workforce in jobs that will lift them out of student poverty and into non-poverty. So that's one kind of student poverty. Then there's a more serious kind of student poverty, which is the student poverty of students from low-income families who may well wind up low-income after graduation. And we know that many of the students in this category are ESL. We know that many students in this category are students who are the first in their, who are the first generation in their family for the entire history of their family line to attend post-secondary education. So needless to say, the conversation we need to have about protecting student tenants from bad landlords, and the conversation we need to have about legal education for the student community, needs to focus particularly on the most marginalized students, low-income students, and differentiate the different kinds of student poverty. So those are comments I want to throw out. I'm going to look down to my notes just to address a few more comments that I heard in the delegation. I heard a comment that I agreed with from Ms. Bertolo, proactive enforcement would mean working toward not needing bylaw enforcement program in the first place. I actually totally agree. My hope is that we can reach a point where bylaw enforcement won't be necessary, and where the landlord community and the student community, and the non-student community, each understand their obligations and their rights and work together in harmony. That is the long-term goal. And further to the point, Stephanie said in her delegation that I haven't explained why the motion I'm bringing forward is better than what the MSU is currently doing. It's true, I haven't done that, and the reason I haven't done that is because I don't think the motion I'm bringing forward is better than what the MSU is doing. I think what the MSU is doing is absolutely great. I don't see this as better. I see this as a complimentary program. I see this as something that the city can do, and certainly not something that's better than anything MSU is doing. We heard from our delegation that the motion I'm bringing forward is irrelevant to the problems we saw over the weekend associated with homecoming, and that's true. I had this conversation yesterday with local attorney Craig Burley on Twitter, in which I admitted that the motion I'm bringing forward today does not directly address the problems to do with policing and the problems to do with university operations that we saw manifest over the weekend through the homecoming parties on Dalewood, on the Oval, and in other places. However, this motion does get at the broad cultural problem that we see in Westdale and Ainsleywood of bad landlordism. So, to reiterate, I am looking forward to working with the MSU on legal education. I'm looking forward to working with the MSU to continue the conversation that actually began years ago under councillor McCarty, but that reached a very interesting moment last night at the monthly meeting of the Ainsleywood-Westdale Community Association. Our MSU leaders, both of our delegates today, in my opinion, bravely came out to enter into conversation with the concerned neighbors and leaders of the Ainsleywood-Westdale Community Association, and police, and McMaster administration about the next steps to address the very complicated web of problems that is facing the student neighborhood around McMaster. Although I disagree with some of the arguments that have been brought forward, I would like to congratulate these students for being excellent advocates and true leaders. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Green?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I'm certainly grateful to have both of you here today. Your presentation is, our points well taken. I will not patronize you nor mince words in my line of questioning. You've heard today that the students have been characterized as presenting a hygiene problem to the community. Would you care to comment on that?
Yeah, so, and we have yet to see the examples of that in how this program has been successful, because what we have been seeing is incidents of grass-cutting, or incidents of recycling bins maybe being visible on the side of a house rather than towards the back, and these are things that frankly we consider trivial when it comes to the hygiene of a community. We care about community cleanups after parties, we care about making sure our streets are safe and clean, and that for us is what a healthy, clean city looks like. But that's not what we're seeing through the bylaw program. Instead, we are seeing fines offloaded onto students for maintenance, which is, again, the landlord's responsibility. So if students are dirtying the city as is, like, as is implied by this motion, nothing about this motion does actually address the issue of landlords if there's no consideration given to the fact that landlords are still offloading costs on to students, because at the end, the students are still paying for it. So in theory, it might work, but in practice, we're not seeing any consideration given to the realities of what students are experiencing.
And through you, Madam Chair, you should know that I didn't support this when it came up the first time. I thought it a unnecessary step in terms of the actual response to the problem. Are you familiar with the 1978 movie Animal House starring Jim Belushi, John Belushi? Are you familiar with that?
Yeah, a little bit.
Are you aware that it is based on the experiences of McMaster University? I believe the producer, are you aware that it is tied to McMaster University?
Oh, did not know that.
So why I say that is I find it quite interesting that the generations of past, which may in some cases actually still live in this neighborhood, had a true and real party culture in that community in terms of what they brought, in terms of disruption and other things. And if you have time, through you, Madam Chair, I encourage you to watch the movie with that new context in mind. I call up to this memory of when councillor Farr, Madam Chair, brought forward the Hess Village motion, and the next week, this video surfaced of this debauchery that was happening in Hess Village. And the reason why I raised that is because when I knew this was coming, and I heard the reports of homecoming, I was very concerned, Madam Chair, that that timing would have weakened your cause. However, I pull up a article from CBC dated October 2, 2017, "Hamilton Deserves Better: 2,000 Students Blocked Dalewood Avenue For Homecoming." Byline, "No Reports Of Mischievous Or Injury Reported," Police Say. To your knowledge, were there any arrests and/or major causes of injury or mischief as it related to the 2,000 people in the homecoming process?
No. So we actually did talk to the police afterwards, and there was no injury to students. EMS was called once, but it was because somebody cut their lip, and it was, and that was the only real situation in which somebody needed medical assistance. And so we're very grateful for the fact that students were safe that day, because that is our major priority.
And I find that...
And no arrests, sorry.
I'm sorry? I find that absolutely amazing. 2,000 students in this neighborhood, residents, you know, in a very student-rich housing area, neighborhood, and we have events like Supercrawl, Festival of Friends, Cactus Festival, with tens of thousands of people requiring paid-duty services and all other types of things. So through you, Madam Chair, to the presenters from the MSU, how long has the tradition of homecoming been at McMaster?
Oh, ages, probably. But the way we've seen homecoming evolve and change, it looks different every year. We can't assume what homecoming is going to look like next year, because it was completely different than it looked last year. So that's one of the great things about homecoming, is that... So that's one of the great things about homecoming is that McMaster students change every year. The spirit is, is there in terms of pride in our community, but it looks different every year and the MSU does work every year to make sure that the next year will be as of, as successful as possible.
And through you, Madam Chair, to the presenters from the MSU, how many students ballpark approximately live in off-campus accommodations in or around McMaster?
Oh, well, it's probably at least 20 to 30% of McMaster's whole population.
Which is roughly 40,000, is that correct?
It's about, so, so we'll have, I would see about 10,000 people of the entire McMaster population living off-campus.
I find that fascinating, Madam Chair, because when I hear that, and we, and I'm going to reflect on the comments of the last delegation, it might be the fact that McMaster students make up the largest ratepayers association in the city. And I'm now curious, Madam Chair, through you and maybe working with the MSU, we could find out what the numbers look like in terms of their economic contribution through property tax assessment. And I bring that point up because it seems like, through me, Madam Chair, to you, to the presenters, would perhaps you consider a proactive measure of planning in future years where appropriate, street, on-street parties, on-street accommodations for homecoming to relieve this 2,000, which compared to Supercrawl is 2%, is relatively small? Would you, would you look at proactive measures that might account for next year's homecoming that would be off-campus and in the community, working perhaps in partnership with, with neighborhood associations and/or business associations and/or high-density student housing communities?
Oh, absolutely. We want, we want an environment where the community can also feel like they are part, where students feel like they're part of the Ainsleywood-Westdale community, but the Ainsleywood-Westdale community also feels like they're part of the student community. And so that, that would be an ideal situation where we get a street closure permit and are able to work or whether it's, whether it's at a park or whether it's on campus, whatever it might be, being able to bring people together and, and enjoy the celebrations that we have, Supercrawl, Art Crawl, and Homecoming.
And so a few more questions along that line because we're trying to work in partnership with the MSU and certainly be proactive in our approach. You've raised some interesting points around the legitimacy and/or the knowledge and experience of underclassmen, or I should say, non-graduated Mohawk students in presenting cases against other students at McMaster. What are your thoughts on that? You'd mentioned legal services. Have you considered any other actions from, from the MSU's perspective in terms of supporting your students as a union?
Yeah, well, it's a very interesting dynamic of the Mohawk students being there. And I spoke to the, the illegitimacy of that system in itself where you're not having licensed bylaw officers who have to go through all the training that any other bylaw officer has to go through. And, and we call into question some of those tickets because of that lack of training. And, and if some of these tickets are not being given out fairly, we're willing to work with students to fight those tickets, whether that's setting up legal counsel for them, whether that is facilitating them accessing legal aid or providing them legal aid itself.
So in your opinion, do you feel like this pits students against students?
Well, yes, like quite frankly, although we don't often see the Mohawk students, the, the very public demonstration is that these are Mohawk students doing this. And we have a great relationship with the Mohawk Student Association and we, we would never want to see that be diminished by something like this. So we actively work to make sure it doesn't, but that is a factor that exists.
I, I'm also curious about the aspect around our own staffing, collective bargaining, union perspectives on using these students in this way and expanding it in this way. But I'll take that up with staff. Lastly, what would you, what would you like to see moving forward? Actually, before I ask that question, have you, have you been apprised of any follow-up reports regarding this motion in terms of this need? Because I don't seem to have one in front of me today. Have you heard any statistics? Have you heard any numbers that would substantiate the need, given the fact that 2,000 students in one of the largest homecomings of recent history I've ever heard? No injuries, no mischief. Have you received any reports that would justify in your mind this need for additional bylaw officers in this community?
No, all of the, all of the, the information we found out about the program, we had to find out ourselves by actually going student to student, for the students who have been very public about their, the impacts that they've, that this program has had on them.
Okay, so from the police, have you heard, are you apprised of any reporting from your chief of security, Mr. Glenn DeCare, or the Hamilton Police Service around the crime trends in your community as it relates to underage drinking, arrests, violence, burglaries, vandalism, you know, anything from that to public urination? Have you, do you get reports on that in terms of how you're doing?
Well, what we have been experiencing is a number of break-in enters into the homes around McMaster from non-students. And that is something that's very alarming, that we haven't seen action being taken on. That's something that we're actually quite worried about. So that's the, that's the main criminal offense that's been happening, but it's not the students who are addressing it. And so on our end, you know, we have to make sure students are locking their doors and things like that. But if people are, if people are coming and targeting these homes around Ainsleywood and Westdale, that's a problem that is not being addressed.
So is it that I'm hearing that as an MSU, your position is that you're feeling that your students are over-policed and underserved?
That would be correct.
Interesting. Okay, so I'm going to have more questions for staff when the time comes as it relates to some of the questions that have been brought before us here today. Certainly appreciate both of you guys being here before us and the perspectives that you share. And I'm, I'm really interested, just while you're up there, to find out what these costs are going to look like in terms of a legal defense fund taking each and every one of these bylaw cases to court. But I'll get that out of staff and we'll get a sense for what the scale is. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I've had myself on the speaker's list, so I'm going to relinquish to Counselor Aiden Johnson just as-
Please go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Just as questions and certainly in, in support of your, your concerns of saying that there needs to be more education for the students and for the landlords. That I cannot deny one iota. It's absolutely imperative that information gets out there, both, both chains, both lines of information. And I want to be very careful, Madam Clerk, that I'm speaking to this because as a- Just so I can understand certainly the issues and the concerns that are being raised by the students and certainly by the landowners. So I will give a particular instance, I won't give names, but I have a owner in my ward that has rental housing in Westdale that rents to students. They were charged under the long grass and weeds bylaw, so maintenance of the property. They were charged. The fine was passed along to the landlord, obviously, very irate, very upset, felt it was inappropriate that they were charged. So I had to kind of go through the process and I said, well, who's responsible to cut the grass? And I'm going to tell you honestly, the tenants are. She said, they are explicitly on the lease advised they are to maintain the grass. So this is where there is a disconnect. And I don't know how you fix that with this particular person. I said, you know what? As a responsible landlord, you should be maintaining the grass. You shouldn't be depending on students who have other interests and issues that they have to deal with right now. So maybe it becomes an issue of how do we make sure that things are followed through proactively, that both sides know their responsibilities? And that's what I get more often than not with, with rental properties. So I just wanted to put that out there. Is that what you're seeing going on?
Yeah, well, when, when those clauses are put into leases, like if it's not put into the lease, the default is that it is the landlord's responsibility. That's what we know. If it's put into the lease, okay, the tenant now has assumed that responsibility, whether knowingly or not, is another issue in itself. And we're working on standardized leases as well with the province. But what we, what we have seen, like even if the lease, if that clause is in the lease, but the landlord is not providing a lawnmower to the students, in, in what capacity can a student go out and buy a lawnmower for a four-year rental? Like those, those are not things that we can expect students to do within their financial constraints. And so that's where we expect cooperation with landlords and tenants to avoid these fines in the first place.
Very much appreciated. And I totally agree. And I really like the idea that you're saying, trying to standardize so everybody knows. And that might be that, that door in to say, we can straighten things out. And I'll be honest, my mother lives in Westdale. She has rental housing all around her, student rental housing. And there's years that they have got great students, absolutely great students. And there's years that she has problems, but she never approaches the students. She will approach the landlord. So just so you understand, I mean, you have to remember the other side of property owners that do take pride. My mother is 54, 55 years in Westdale now, takes great pride in the property and certainly likes to see properties maintained around her as well. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have Counselor Partridge.
Great. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have one question for Ryan, and I'm sorry, what was your name?
Stephanie.
Stephanie, thanks very much for coming in, but I have quite a few questions for staff. So if you'll come back to me when it's appropriate. So Ryan and Stephanie, there was an article in the paper about the party that happened, which has already been spoken to quite extensively. My question is around non-students. Non-students not only that were at the party, but also non-students that are living amongst the students in McMaster. Is, is that happening? And can you speak to what you feel might be the percentage or the amount?
Well, in terms of permanent residents, are you, sorry, are you referring to student-age non-students who are living around there?
Yeah, I'm referring to students who would be at parties like this or associating with students at McMaster, perhaps going on campus, but they're not actually students. They don't actually attend the university.
Yeah, I think the amount of people who are living in Ainsleywood and Westdale who don't actually attend McMaster is quite limited to the, the people who have lived there for a very long time. And so those are the community members we see who, you know, who are much older and who have raised their families here and maybe have moved in as a family, so.
Okay, no, and I, and Madam Chair, I asked that question because, you know, certainly my, my own sons, when they attended university, you know, there would be perhaps six living in a house and, you know, ultimately one or two would not be attending the university, but they were sharing in, kind of living in there, but they participated in contributing to the, you know, the, the property standards and, and certainly the partying and that going on. So, you know, it may not be a big issue at McMaster, but I appreciate your answer for that. If you'll come back to me, Madam Chair. We'll come back and start at speaker's list for staff questions. I have Counselor Farr.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was a student at MAC back in 1991. It might have been 92, a little bit fuzzy. And I attended, I was actually in attendance at the very last McMaster University Homecoming Weekend Quad Party. They were famous. Every year there were quad parties on campus, no, in no way dissimilar to obviously what occurred on Dalewood in the past few days. This last party, however, was, I think, in a word to describe it, mayhem. There were fights, there were beer bottle bombs thrown up in the air in a very large condensed crowd. And MAC 5-0, I can safely say, were totally overwhelmed with the fisticuffs. Fortunately, nobody was seriously hurt that I could see. One person ran off with handcuffs into the trees. They were so overwhelmed that they had to let that person go. I don't, I always wondered to this day how they ever got out of those handcuffs. But it was mayhem. I had attended many before, even as a high school student once, because 5440 was playing and they were my favorite band at the time. And they were never like that particular last quad party. The result was McMaster brass got together and said, that's it, no more quad parties on campus. So my guess is, the result soon after was that these types of quad parties now began to happen in the neighborhoods and not dissimilar to many other schools. MAC didn't want the liability and, you know, you can argue whether or not that's justified. But my question to you through you, Chair, is in your time or in recent times, has the conversation ever occurred with the powers that be, Sean, our student staffer there, I forget his last name, and the student union or the student body representatives about a return to campus for these homecoming parties? And if so, has it happened or is it, is there a possibility that that may happen and, and as a result, quite possibly mitigate some of the on-street parties that are happening? Through you, Chair.
Yep, so, so that, sorry to age you, but that was a long time ago. And so things have-
It's okay. Counselor Jackson is also here and that was, I think, the 70s, 80s-
Let's not get into that.
90s, 70s. Okay, there's a few alumni here.
But what we, but so, so what we, so that, what that means is that all options really are on the table for us. And there, the idea of having something on campus is not off the table, absolutely. And the dean of students is well positioned to, to make that call as well. But again, we have not banned things on campus and we've actually held large-scale campus events. But I, I do want to just speak to the fact that these things are still not particularly relevant to the motion at hand. And when we are talking about this bylaw enforcement, we don't actually, these sort of one, these annual parties of homecoming or St. Patrick's Day that happen once a year are not addressed by bylaw enforcement about maintenance. That's front-of-the-line law enforcement that we need to see and that the MSU and McMaster do contribute to as well.
Thank you. Counselor Brenda Johnson, first time.
Actually, Counselor Farr asked the one question because I also was an attendee back in the, what, I can't remember. But the question I asked was, why aren't we doing this on campus? And the, the response back was, no, they don't want, they don't want us trash in there. So I'm just putting that out there. But I want to ask you a question about property standards. When I went to post-secondary school, it was with the understanding of, of my getting the training or my getting the knowledge of becoming responsible citizens, as we do with high school and as you do even up to kindergarten. So when you're looking at property standards, you're looking at the care of the place, in fact, where you live. Does that not give you that training ground for when you do get out onto your own properties? You do rent some, from someone else, not as a student, but, so I guess what it comes down to is there's a bubble that's been created. When you get out of that bubble, do you then start taking care of the properties? Do you then start taking care of, of everything on an everyday basis, not just because we had a big bash on Friday night?
Right. So, so I, I do fundamentally believe that most students do take care of their properties.
I do too.
Being, being one of those students myself. And so for those few, I think that this does act as a learning experience, but the responsibility is on all of us, the city, the McMaster Students Union, and McMaster University, to ensure that we are cultivating renters who will be successful renters in the future. The, the reality of our generation is that many of us are never going to be homeowners. And so we want to make sure that people are renters who, who know their rights and who care for their properties. And we don't believe a punitive approach cultivates that effectively.
Thank you. And, and thank you for that very good answer. That wasn't to suggest that every single student out there is the one that's, that's crossing the line. But I think we can both agree that there are select few that are ruining it for the rest. And unfortunately for the select few, and I think every one of us have neighborhoods in our communities who have renters. We have good renters, we have not-so-good renters. And the community is constantly coming into our offices saying, you need to do something about this property. And, and they will cite all different infractions and what effect it has on their property, not to mention property values and, and the debris that's now scattered into their property. They're now starting to clean up after their neighbors. So it is sort of a bit of a rat's nest, if you will, no pun intended, because that was another complaint. But it is a bit of a rat's nest. So how do we treat everybody across the city equally? Because we're all responsible for our own actions. So what message would you like us to give the rest of the city when we say, okay, but don't, don't touch this neighborhood, but make sure the rest of the neighborhoods are up to standard?
So I think the issue is, is that we're seeing increased bylaw enforcement within the McMaster area. This isn't, like the proactive approach isn't across the city. There are bylaw infractions on my street in Ward 6. And when we see grass too long, we cut it ourselves. If we, if our neighbor is away, we shovel their snow. And I think with this bylaw enforcement, this program with the proactive approach to send bylaw officers around or these students around to parole the neighborhood and see if someone's grass is too long or if their, like boxes are in the wrong place, I don't think that is teaching students about their rights. Like it is, but in a punitive way, you're punishing them for doing it for the first time. And we're seeing increased punishment in this area that we're not seeing in other areas of Hamilton. We have bylaw, of course, we have bylaw officers and I do understand, my mom gets mad when the neighbor behind us has junk in their backyard. And if we do, we, like we may call the city, but, and I think it is important to have bylaw enforcement. But I don't think the paroling and the proactiveness of this is fair and it is not being done in the rest of the city. in the rest of the city.
And thank you for that answer, and if you want to use comparisons, Ward 11 does have a specialized bylaw officer that we have commissioned to go through Ward 11 specifically. So, you're not just the only ones that, we've recognized that there's an issue and that we have hired people to go in there and proactively go in and stop illegal businesses and property standards and all that. So, just to let you know, you're not the only ones that have been put into a motion to make sure that that neighborhood stays up to par. So, thank you very much for your questions and answers. They were, they were well done.
Thank you, Counselor. I have Counselor Aiden Johnson, second time.
Thank you. Just a quick information point, Madam Chair. Counselor Partridge asked a question about non-students, and what I can report is this. During my campaign, when I ran to be Ward 1 Counselor, I knocked on every door in the ward, and one thing I learned is that there are, there are a large number of low-income non-students who are living in Westdale and Ainsleywood, and there's significant anecdotal evidence suggesting that the number is growing. Lower-income non-students are increasingly moving into Ainsleywood, particularly because the rental opportunities are there and cheap. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. With that, then, we have no further questions. If the presenters may have a motion to receive, both presenters, one by Counselor Green, second by Counselor Aiden Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I'm going to come back now, back into committee. Thank you, everyone. Questions of staff? Counselor Green, I have first, and Counselor Partridge, so far.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Through you to anybody who would like to maybe answer this question, because I'm not clear. Has there been a follow-up staff report prepared?
Through the chair to the Counselor. On September 26th, an information update was sent to the mayor and member counsel, updating on the effectiveness of this pilot project from January 1st to August 31st.
I apologize. Did I miss it in today's package? Like, it wasn't included as an, as appendix to this motion?
No, I believe it was sent out via email.
Okay. So, perhaps you can speak to this and on those points, because I do apologize, I missed that email. What, if you could give maybe an overview of that report for the general benefit of the public? You've heard today, the MSU has not received this. It hasn't been presented in any of the committees, so I'm assuming it hasn't been made public?
It, it's an information update. The pilot is still running, so we would, coming back with a full report at the end that would be made more public. What we reported on in this report was that we began the program by inviting members of the AWWCA, AWCA, and the MSU peer-to-peer coordinators to a meeting to discuss this pilot project and the increased expanded enforcement that was coming. We discussed the need to get some communication out. We drafted a communication. Everybody reviewed, had input, and their comments were incorporated. This communication was sent out through the chairs of those two community groups. It was sent out through the Counselor's office, and it was sent to McMaster University to send out through their social media. So, that went out first. From there, we had a senior officer attend and train McMaster's peer-to-peer volunteers on the bylaws, the bylaw violations, and what is needed for compliance.
I'm sorry, if I could, these are volunteers?
Peer-to-peer McMaster volunteers that have a community outreach.
Oh, sorry.
But our officer attended and did a presentation to inform them of what would be coming and the bylaws that they needed to be aware of. Our student officers started, they did their training for a full month with an officer, and from there, they hit the pavement, going up and down the streets. They attended 34 streets and visited approximately 1,100 homes, knocking on doors, talking to property owners and tenants about what the program was about, their role, bylaw violations, and what was needed to be done. They handed out Bylaw 101 pamphlets as well. We also attended the student fair. We set up a booth, and we had officers attending to engage the students and talk about the various bylaws that are more relevant for the McMaster University neighborhood.
Could I ask a question in that? How many student officers do you have in the outreach program?
We have, in our Mohawk, or McMaster, I'm sorry, our Mohawk College program, we have two that are with animal services. We have two specific to McMaster University, and we have two that are patrolled through the rest of the city of Hamilton.
So, on that point, two students to do outreach to 40,000 McMaster students in the community?
Two students, yes.
Okay. And I raise those points, Madam Chair, because it's clear that I wasn't, I didn't read the email or I didn't get the memo. I'm sure that that's a way that communication goes out. I normally get them in staff reports, but information report, I understand that. So, there's been two students. What is their wage? Like, is there any concern around our own collective agreements as it relates to staffing? Is this like a temporary contract position? Is there a prevailing fair wage policy that's included in this?
Through the chair to the Counselor. When we began the pilot, that's the first thing we did, is we checked with Labor Relations on if we were permitted to go forward with this and make sure that we were above board and fair on all of this. Recently, I've double-checked with them when I saw the motion going forward, that the program has actually wanted to be expanded by two. Labor Relations has given me the green light. I sent them all the Mohawk College communications on this program, what it was about, and that we also have other co-op students in various sections within the city of Hamilton. The students are paid at a rate of $19, $19 an hour.
Is that the prevailing wage for other bylaw enforcement?
No, it's actually 55% of a Step 1 of the lowest grade of a bylaw officer.
So, they're getting paid half of what our bylaw officers get?
Approximately, yes. Mohawk College has reported back to me, when I questioned the wage that we were paying, that their student, that we, the city of Hamilton, are one of their highest paying for co-op students.
Relative precarity is not a standard that I ascribe to, so I have concerns that they're getting paid half of the fair prevailing wage of their counterparts. That's problematic and maybe cause for concerns from their behalf, but through you, how many fines have been levied?
We have issued 736 ordered to comply. We have a 75% compliance rate, which is huge.
I'm sorry, say that again?
We have 736 ordered complies were issued for various yard-related maintenance bylaws, and we have a 75% compliance rate, voluntary compliance rate.
And so, what are the actual fines if they don't comply? And what's the, I heard $750.
We do not issue a ticket for yard-maintenance-related bylaw violations unless it snow on sidewalks. The fines are for non-compliant properties. They're fee-for-inspection charges. They're the charges that we apply standard throughout the city of Hamilton. And the work that these bylaw officers are doing is not the full scope of a bylaw officer. It's a small portion of the work they do. It's only yard-maintenance-related bylaws. So, you're talking about long grass and weeds, garbage and debris, snow on sidewalks. Those are the bylaws they focus on. We would not be able to have our students do exactly what a bylaw officers do, having approximately 50 bylaws in the city of Hamilton.
So, we've heard here today that there's a bit of a gap, I think, in MSU's position and where the Counselor is at. We've heard that they're willing to pursue this and provide legal support for people. What is the cost, our legal cost, per property standards committee enforcement?
The yard-maintenance bylaw does not go through an appeal process, only property standards.
Okay. So, there's no, there's no legal costs if they decide to appeal this? There's no avenues for appeal on this?
And they can request to have their fees for service reviewed.
And who would review that?
Senior staff.
And there's no review or oversight after that?
And once they make their decision, they've made their decision.
Okay.
They review all the officer's notes, the pictures, the evidence that's been taken at the time of the investigations.
Okay. That helps, because I was unclear about the chain of appeal. So, that helps. Thank you.
Counselor Partridge?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and just a couple of questions. So, thank you for the answers to the previous questions, but I'm going to just ask you to unpack it a little bit more, because it's not clear to me. So, if we had 736 orders to comply, is that correct?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Okay. And we had a 75% rate of compliance with that, right?
Correct.
Okay. But there's no fees charged?
Yes, there's fees charged for non-compliance.
For orders to comply?
Yes. So, 25% of the properties didn't comply with their orders, they would have been issued a fee for service.
So, only the 25% would actually be issued the fees for service? Okay. So, how can the fees and the fines cover the cost if there's only 25% that are getting charged? And a follow-up to that question is also, you know, I heard, I thought I heard you say, Madam Chair, that there are fees that were forgiven. So, of that 25%, I'm assuming that some of those fees would be forgiven. So, how is it covering the cost?
So, let me clarify. The fees for service, if there is a repeated violation within a one-year period, even though they may have complied, there was a violation at the time of the inspection, and that would be included.
But, so, my question is still, how can the fees and the fines cover the costs? And are they, if only 25% are actually?
They are covering. The fees for a first-time fee for service are $271, and then, I believe, it's about $160 for every subsequent violation after that.
So, students are being charged $271?
The property owner is. It goes to the property taxes.
So, it is the property owner?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And so, the other thing, question I have, Madam Chair, and perhaps this should be to Madam Clerk, the info report, if I understand it, was emailed around to Counselors. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. But at some point in time, do these information reports, why didn't it come to GIC or be part of a committee package?
This was just to give an update on the status of the program. The full report will be coming out once the program is completed at the end of December, and we have all the information, and we've done our program evaluation.
So, that will be at the end of December, then?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. And I guess the issue that I have with this motion is that it, you know, we're asking to, being asked to support something in the absence of the full report that will have all the information coming forward, which I'm hearing is going to be December.
That is correct.
Okay. So, you know, there's no account numbers, there's no financial information in here. We don't know what the costs are going to be. We don't know, because the final report is due in December. And although I do understand, correct me if I'm wrong, that the information report did contain some information, we don't have that in front of us with this motion. And I find that just a little bit problematic. You know, it would definitely have been helpful to the mover if we had had that report in front of us with this motion as it stands right now. So, the report coming forward in December, what are you expecting that to include that would be more than what's in the information report?
Well, we've had a lot of, we've been out there issuing through the September move-in week. I would say that we will have, probably similar to what we have right now, a lot of orders issued, a high rate of compliance, and some fee-for-services charged. The student wages will be covered through the fee-for-service charges issued.
And so, the, I think this probably is my final question, but the information report, and I do remember receiving it, but I got to be honest with you, you know, I glanced through it as quickly as I could because of the hundreds of other emails that we all tend to get. But the information in that information report, was it January to June? Is that what was included in the timeframe?
It was January to August 31st.
January to August 31st. Thank you. So, that would have included move-out week, when there's the most garbage around?
We always have a lot of garbage through April when they move out.
Right.
And September when they move in. Waste management is also involved at that time, issuing orders or notices for waste inappropriate at the curb.
Okay. So, the answer is yes, then that would have been included in the figures. So, okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. I am, I am having some difficulty with this, because, as I say, in the absence of more information and the final report coming through in December, I would much rather wait until then before we dealt with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I have Counselor Aiden Johnson next, if you'd like to speak now. Aiden and I have Counselor Green.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Counselor Partridge makes a good point, which is that it would be helpful to have the report in front of us. And I won't go into the story of how it all worked out, but I will say that she makes a good point. And I've just conferred with Counselor Brenda Johnson, who made me think that maybe my motion should be tabled until we have the report. I'm wondering about an energetic response to this idea. Yeah. Okay. So, Madam Chair, the fun will continue another day. I propose a tabling motion till, if staff could provide me with the date that the report will be available.
Probably the, the program goes to the end of the December. We can start working on the report. We have a lot of information already gathered. The issue is, is that the hiring for these co-op students begins now, waiting to December. Like last year, we were at committee in December as well, rushing it through because the students accept other placements, so the posting for...
Well, you know what? I had forgotten that argument from staff, and now I'm remembering it, and it's actually changing, changing my mind about the tabling motion. So, I'm not going to offer a tabling motion. I would like to go ahead with the motion that's on the agenda to vote on. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. All of the questions I had for staff have already been asked, more or less. I suppose the one question I would throw in is for staff to just speak about this motion in terms of why it is that staff supports the motion and the program. Why?
We get a lot of complaints from the community when we're out there about the conditions. Yard maintenance is a small portion of the bylaw enforcement we do. After our students being out there and doing their enforcement, they have reported back to me that they have seen a considerable improvement in the communities, and they have received very positive feedback, not only from the property owners that they have built relationships with out there, but also the occupants living in these homes. When an officer issues an order to comply for any property, they do not know whether or not there is a student living in that house or if it's a permanent resident of that property. So, they, just in general, it's been very, very successful. Our summer student and our other student programs are also very successful programs. Thank you.
And, Madam Chair, could you remind me, was our agenda amended such that the motion is now, I can present my motion, I think that's in order, but I'll go to you for advice on that.
It's, your motion is here to be presented, Counselor.
So, great. So, Counselor Farr had agreed to second the motion.
Okay. So, you're going to put...
Yeah.
That's fine. Counselor Green had one more question of staff, though, please, if I could maybe...
Sure. Sorry.
Counselor Green?
So, understanding that there's no recourse for any type of appeal, that this is a decision that's made by staff, senior-level staff, unappealable, I do have a concern, Madam Chair, through you to legal. What is the human rights parameter around targeting identifiable groups for governing basic city bylaws? Is there anything within the parameter that might put us at risk of some kind of class action if we are crafting bylaw to target an identifiable group in our city?
Through you, Madam Chair. Human rights law is not my typical practice area, but that's certainly something I can look into and have appropriate staff to follow up with you on.
Well, I would like to ask, and I don't know if it's appropriate, but within the context of this report that's coming back, I would like to get some kind of legal opinion around whether targeting students specifically for bylaws that are not being equally applied to all residents across the city might constitute an infraction from the Human Rights Code. And then, I'll save my comments around that for once the motion is being put. Thank you.
So, I'm going to put myself now on the speakers' list. Counselor Johnson, if you take the chair, please, just following that question. So, I just want to verify through to Ms. Barnett Kelly. You stated earlier, and I want to be sure, when the students go out and do proactive enforcement, they're not targeting students, they're targeting properties. We don't know whether it's the owner that's causing the problem or it's because it's...
We don't know whether it's the owner that's causing the problem, or it's because it's student housing, correct?
That is correct, councillor.
I just want to be sure for the record, we're aware of that, because they do not go in saying, okay, it looks like it's a student house, bang, we're, we're going to target it. They have no idea. Thank you very much for that. And I want to ask a second question, if I could, is, just going back, the good councillor Ward wants asking for two more. Do we find that the existing co-op students that we have now have just been inundated? I mean, I'm getting, I'm getting a sense that things have been getting better, so are we giving an indication that we still haven't got enough enforcement out there?
We're, we're still very, very busy, and we're also weather-driven. So, for instance, if we get a lot of snow, which we didn't have in January of this year, we would need a lot more enforcement out there. So yes, we are busy enough to expand the program and even keep our summer students' program going.
Okay, I just wanted to verify that. Thank you very much. And I'll take the chair back, but I-
Food, tank, or ticket. Councillor Partridge?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And, and you just raised another question in my mind, so the, what we're, we're still going to have the two existing students. What we're, what, what this motion is asking for is two additional students, so there would be four. Is that correct?
That is correct, leaving two other students for the remainder of the city of Hamilton.
Okay, so there's still going to be the two students, so nothing has changed in terms of the number of students. And as the previous speaker said, Madam Chair, that the situation is actually getting better. I mean, none of us can predict what the weather's going to be at any time of year, but it doesn't mean we will run out and hire staff, just in case. So we're not losing two, we're still going to have that two, we're still going to have the existing one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now councillor Aidan Johnson, come back to you on your motion.
Thanks very much. And councillor Farr has agreed to second, A, that the pilot program using Mohawk College co-op students for enforcement of yard maintenance and related bylaws be made permanent in communities around McMaster University, and B, the two additional Mohawk College co-op students be hired for enforcement of yard maintenance-related bylaws for McMaster neighborhood at full-cost recovery from the inspection fees. And all of my arguments have been presented, and I'd like to thank my council colleagues for their consideration of this motion, which comes in the context of what we've clearly heard today to be a very complex web of issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion's on the floor, councillor Green.
Thank you very much, and I think I've expressed some of my reservations around this, this motion, the way that it's been presented. I'd like to introduce, actually, a thesis that was done on bylaw here in our city called Governing Incivility, which is an ethnographic account of municipal law enforcement, urban renewal, and neighborhood conflict in the city of Hamilton. Extensive, extensive hours of ride-along program from an academic who highlighted the way in which the city proactively works in neighborhoods to be able to work through some of these complex issues of, of neighborhood conflict. And I think worth noting for all those involved, both present here around this table, but also from the MSU. And what I'm left with is still the feeling that this overpolicing and underservicing of our students is contrary to everything we say around wanting to retain and attract the best and the brightest, and wanting to use an asset-based approach to neighborhood development. I, I feel it is punitive, and I feel that it is, at $261, applied to students in an unfair way. And I think what we're going to find, Madam Chair, is we will, in pitting students against students, end up having students being pitted against the city of Hamilton in a way that is not congruent with everything we've said around wanting to retain and retract these students. I know in my time at Acadia, I was the Defence Council for the Senate, so when someone was caught doing things that were inappropriate, I would often offer them advice, and the advice that I would give them is that, we had an appeals process in Nova Scotia, was that they take whatever they can from this process and, and appeal it at the next level and claim hardship and their inability to pay these types of fees. And it seems to me that, left without any recourse for appeal, left with incomplete information from the Residential Tenancies Act, what we're forcing the MSU to do is essentially create an adversarial approach to informing the students on how to interact with the landlords. And I just, I, I do have to raise the point, we have allowed for the expansion of inappropriate density in Westdale. We have allowed for illegal landlords to create rooming houses to provide accommodations for students that are often paying $600, $700 a room without proper building code and without proper fire code and without proper oversight. That is not the fault of the students, the students are not the problem. Poor policy is the problem. Poor planning is the problem. Poor regulation and oversight of landlords is the problem. And what we've done, when we talk about the hygiene of a community in a very specific way, is stigmatize students when all the reports suggest that even when they do congregate, reminded that the legal age of drinking has, and, and students are entering into university younger, is just not the same animal house culture that they had in the 70s, 80s, and apparently the 90s. Certainly, when I was there in 2004, I, I thought it was kind of lame in terms of how the McMaster University, their, their, their party culture compared to other places like Bishop's, LaBelle, and all these other places where they're literally burning couches in the street and toppling cars. So if we want to talk about relative town-and-gown relationships, I think McMaster does a great job. But I think what this does is stigmatize the population and create a targeted approach to enforcement, that quite frankly, when I have some of the situations that I have in my neighborhood with gang houses, you know, in some situations, drug houses, flop houses, and others, I would love to have extra resources to be able to, you know, proactively go out there and shut these places down with high criminality and major social pressure in my neighborhood. Which is why I think we referred this to the budget conversation the last time, because this is, I, I think, a undue, over-simplified approach to creating a proactive relationship with the students. So I won't be supporting this. I won't be supporting this because I think there are better, more appropriate avenues to engage with students and the leadership that's there. I won't be supporting this because I do believe with authenticity in the value that they bring. I'm curious now, Madam Chair, to know if they were to form a ratepayers association, what would their economic impact look in our property tax assessment with 10,000 students? What are they paying at 2.7% mill rate for their per-square-foot a, a unit? It's a very interesting question. And, and when they start flexing their economic, you know, value in the city, I think we'll see maybe a different situation, because all these houses, all the, all the residents, the longtime residents that have been there forever, have received a tremendous amount of speculative equity in their properties just by the fact they could be student rentals. Incredible amount, disproportionate. And I would love to see what the impact says in terms of trends of the value of Ainsley Wood and Dalewood for the families that bought there in the 80s and 90s perhaps, and now are sitting on three-quarter of a million dollars, just because it's possible their properties could be rentals. So it's tough on one hand to get all the economic benefits and uplift and enforced appreciation of equity, and then on the other hand, say we don't want them here. And then on the third hand, when we do have appropriate density projects along corridors, turn it down because they don't want density. They don't want to have multi-level residential student housing, form-built student housing there. So, seems super-complex, and I think this is oversimplified. So I won't be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brenda Johnson, and I have myself on the list.
Yep, thank you. From what I understand through the conversations and the questions asked to staff, that of the 100% of those who were given orders, 75% were compliant, were compliant at the end of the day, no fees were charged. It's the 25% that are still in noncompliance. I'm looking at it this way, that if we eliminate the resources in this community right now, the 25% doesn't go away. So where do we get the resources to deal with the 25%? And that's just what we have on the docket today. That doesn't mean tomorrow it could change, it could be even more. So therefore, now we have bylaw officers coming from all over the city to, to target areas because it's by complaint only. So my concern is if we eliminate this, or we don't beef it up, then it's, the 25% carries on as normal. They're the ones that are actually getting charged. I don't believe for a second that, that it's, it's, let's go after the students. I think it's let's go after a community that's experiencing a lot of negative impacts on those who do not care for their properties. So what's the difference whether it's here, it's in Winona, it's in, in Beasley, or if it's, if it's in Waterdown? The concern would still be there. So I understand that this is 100% cost recovery, so that's why I have no issues whatsoever with this coming forward. I do reserve the, the right, though, in December, if we do find out that the report is revealing a lot more than what we've been told today, then I would like to have the reserve, the point of bringing a motion forward to eliminating the two, the two positions that we have asked for today. So, folks, seriously, if this was any other community in Stony Creek, and Glanbrook, and Dundas, and Ancaster, and in, in Flamborough, we would be doing the exact same thing. We've targeted a concern, we've gone after the concern, 25% are noncompliant, that will not go away until we get compliance out of 100%. And in any community, that would be hallelujah for all the property owners, or those that just live in the, in the area and rent would love to hear, especially those who take very good care of their properties. They're the ones that have to live amongst this. So I'm supportive of this, and thank you for your time. Thank you, and I have myself on the list, councillor-
Please go ahead.
Thank you, and certainly appreciate all the former speakers. And without a doubt, I will support this, because I have to remember that this is not targeting students. This is targeting property owners. And this is where we have to target, and they, they have to understand that. If the property owners are passing this charge on to the students, then that's another issue that has to be dealt with. But today, we have to deal with property standards. It may not be a student house, that is the problem. It could be, you know, I hate to say, but an aging senior, and that's, happens a lot throughout of all of our community, that just aren't able to deal with the overwhelming, you know, weather conditions we've had this year. I mean, I think my husband's told me he's cut the grass, if not twice a week, at least every single week this year, right through summer, right through August, which is unheard of because of the amount of rains and the weather we've had. So this is not targeting students, and I certainly appreciate what the ward councillor has to deal with. And, you know, I wish we could, you know, wave a magic wand and let, make people all understand that we all have rights and responsibilities. And, you know, this is unfortunately, the way we have to deal with it is by providing more enforcement, and that's how we have to deal with it. And as was mentioned in the last previous speaker saying, it could be anywhere in this city, absolutely anywhere in this city, this could be going on. So I would hope that if I had an issue in Ward 10 and had to deal with it, that my colleagues would be supportive of it. I have a Saltfleet campus at Mohawk, and I have to say, fortunately, I don't have a lot of student rental housing there because they're tradespeople more than anything, but there are some student rental houses. I don't target them as property standards because they're student houses. When bylaw's sent, it's to the principal residents. So I will be supporting this today, and certainly look forward to the report that's coming in December, and we can get, I did read the previous report, but a Folsom report at the end of the year to give us a good indication that this is the right way to go. Thank you.
Councillor?
Take, take the chair back, yes?
Just wanted to respond to that, the motion, the, the text of the motion doesn't say Ainsley Wood, it says McMaster neighborhood. So it's very clear in the wording of the motion, this is targeted towards McMaster students. Thank you.
Okay, so we can play on words, and I'm not going to do that. So we have a motion before us, moved by councillor Aidan Johnson, seconded by councillor Jason Farr. All in favor?
Carried.
Opposed? Thank you. We have councillor Partridge and councillor Green opposed. That carries, okay? Thank you, everyone. We're going to move on.
So, we have-
Okay, under presentations we have done today, we have the discussion items, it's not, 8-1 is the signed variance appeal, SV 816-020 for the property known as 442 Mill and Road, Stony Creek. This was denied by the Director of Planning and Chief Planner and appealed by the owner, PED 17145, Ward 10, and it was deferred on September 19th. And I believe the appellant, Dominic Marini, the property owner, is requesting that this be deferred again to November the 14th. So may I have a motion to approve the appellant's, councillor Johnson? Yeah, I, I'll second the, or I'll move that- Move it. -motion. I have a question for staff afterwards regarding this in general, not this particular one, please.
I appreciate that. So we have a mover and a second, a seconder, councillor Connelly, thank you very much, I know it's in my ward, and I'm very supportive of this being moved on, if you want to ask your question, but I asked staff last meeting about the signed bylaw.
Well, yeah, and we seem to have a lot of them coming up, and, on the South Service Road, not so much where in the North Service Road because it's mostly residential. But on the South Service Road, and when you go into any other municipality, you have the digital signs, you have, because it is a very extremely high-trafficked area, it's not a negative impact on neighboring residents. So I, I just wonder if, if we cannot just, at least for the main corridors like the QEW, that we basically give it to the MTO, and if they approve it, it's not a, a sightline issue, it's not a distraction issue, if we cannot just go forward with this? So I understand we have a bylaw in place, I'm just wondering if South Service Road in particular is, is a whole different animal than downtown Hamilton or, or in a residential area. And I believe we have another one, and that's the Lasani one that's on, at the corner of McNeely and South Service Road. So this seems to be a, an area, so go ahead, Ken.
Through you, Madam Chair. There is a report coming forward in the, in the new year, first quarter, we hope, to update the signed bylaw in relation to digital signs. We, we already went down that road with the proposal and the billboards, and we have a bit of a template of what we need to work with, some, some new criteria, but we have committed to bring a report first quarter of next year on updating the signed by, bylaw in relation to this.
And thank you for that, Ken, because I think it's really imperative, the QEW is actually on the 400 series, so, so is 401, and the Gardner Expressway, and all those are considered the 400 series. If we could at least adopt what the MTO is suggesting along the 400 series, because my understanding is their rules are stricter than any ones I've ever read. So I would just really appreciate to understand what is the difference between what the MTO is requiring and what the city of Hamilton is requiring, because I think there's, that becomes the conflict. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, councillor Aidan Johnson's left. Councillor Farr, you'll take the chair, I appreciate the comments of councillor Johnson, and certainly on this particular sign issue, I know it's been a long, long, drawn-out process, and I appreciate asking staff to review the signed bylaws that relates to electronic signs throughout the city. That was one area where we've had such change in the last couple of years, as far as the technology, et cetera, that we need to look at. So if I could ask through councillor Farr, deputy, through to Ken, the, the new rules coming in, or the, the report coming forward in the new year, will it, would it address the two applicants that we have coming forward currently? So we have, as was stated, this is Dominic Marini and Bosani.
Through you, Madam Chair, I'm not sure if, in fact, anything that currently is out there would be grandfathered. I know there were signs that were grandfathered prior to the current signed bylaw, and, and we actually have them earmarked that, that they're previously approved through a variance, and so we do not enforce. So I'd have to look into that, and we could also, we could bring it back and be inclusive in the report as a recommendation.
I would appreciate that, because I think that would make it more comprehensive, that at least we get that information. And I do recall that we've had some variances that we've actually approved here at committee that staff had denied. So there are, there are examples out there currently. The other, the other point I just wanted to raise, and a good, good point is with regards to the ministry. My understanding, the ministry approves what the municipality approves, it's a circle. So if the municipality doesn't approve it, and the ministry doesn't approve it, so it's not a matter of saying the ministry will approve it, they will only approve what the municipality approves. So it's a cat-and-mouse game of running around in circles. So we need to get to the bottom of that as well. So I appreciate the motion, though, to defer this application till the November 14th meeting. It's been moved and seconded, I'll take the chair back. All in favor? Thank you, everyone. Item 8-2 is the applications for official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment for lines located at 60, 68, and 72 Centennial Parkway South, Stony Creek Board 9, PED 17162. This was referred back to staff on September the 19th, and to incorporate amendments to the recommendations to exclude a restaurant use and a marijuana dispensary use, and report back with the appropriate bylaw amendments. So the public delegations were held on September the 19th, and no delegation requests have been received for this meeting. Councillor Connelly, did you wish to present your amendments?
I could. If staff wants to make comments on it first, it might speed up the process.
Okay, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Through you, Madam Chair, to the councillors. So planning staff were directed to exclude the use of marijuana dispensary in restaurant from the recommendations in the bylaw amendments. So in regards to the marijuana dispensary, that use is not permitted anywhere in the city. As such, we did not specifically exclude it from the bylaw, but instead changed the wording to make it known that only the- wording to make it known that only the uses listed in the bylaw would be permitted. So it's different language, but same intent. In terms of the restaurant use, we removed that from the list of permitted uses and instead recommend introducing convenience food store as a permitted use, which would still allow the applicant to have, or sell convenience items, so such as snacks, snacks, foods, beverages, so on. So it still achieves that same goal of the type of use that they wanted as an accessory use, but we just changed, again, from restaurant to convenience food store. And then, in addition, we put a cap on the size of the accessory uses, so for retail store and convenience food store, to, again, keep it small scale.
Thank you. Councilor Brenda Johnson, question to that?
Yeah, one of the big concerns from the public was that this coffee shop, restaurant, convenience store was going to be running all hours. Is there anything in the bylaws that require the convenience store to be open only and in the event that the building is open, so during the course of business hours?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the Counselors. So the convenience store would be accessed through the main entrance door of the building, so it would all be accessed through one door. So there would not be a separate operating hour for the convenience food store.
So, thank you. So the building closes, so does the convenience store. So the convenience stores' hours are dependent on when the building's open, which is usually business hours while the clinic's open and the pharmacy's open. Thank you very much. That's it.
Okay, with that, Councilor Conley, your motion? Amending motion, thank you.
It's an amending motion, and it's pretty self-explanatory in that we've changed the restaurant to a convenience store, and we've limited the size of the stores that can be in there. I think it's a more positive way of doing it, so I'm recommending it. And if you want me to read out the whole thing, I can, but I don't think it's necessary. And it's seconded by Chad Collins.
Thank you, Counselor. Seconded, Chad Collins. I'm just going to make sure for the record, the clerk's going to be sure, we've added C, that in accordance with subsection 3417 of the Planning Act, no additional public meeting notices required, and D, that public submissions regarding this matter affected the decision by supporting the approval of the application with amendments. Madam Clerk, you have that? So it's moved and seconded. All in favor?
Carried.
Good job, Counselor. Thank you. Now we're on to 8-3, is application for urban Hamilton official plan amendment, zoning bylaw amendment, and draft plan of subdivision, draft plan of condominium for lands located at 820 Rymel Road East, Hamilton, PED 17160, Ward 6. This was also referred back to staff on September the 19th, and for two weeks until today, to allow, meeting, to allow consultation between the Ward Counselor, and good morning, Councilor Chad, sorry, Tom Jackson, and staff and the developer and the residents. So you have it before us. The public meeting was held on September the 19th. No other delegation requests have been received for this meeting. And Councilor Jackson, you wish to speak to this?
Can you get somebody to move it and second it?
Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilor Chad Collins. I was thinking you'd have seconded moving it. And Councilor Partridge, seconded? Thank you. Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, I really appreciate the committee's indulgence from two weeks ago on the urgent matter that caused my departure, unfortunately. Everything is in hand regarding that personal nature. I truly want to thank the purchaser of the property, Blake Wyatt, Blake, you were introduced last time, two weeks ago on September 19th, his agent, Michael Barton. And I want to also thank Tom Tapp, if you recall, my resident, who spoke as well respectfully two weeks ago, and brought the petition of 38 names from neighbors in the community that had some concerns, initial objection over this type of intense development. And, Madam Chair, just to tell a quick little story in leading to this amended motion that's before you here, which I'm fully supportive of, I met Mr. Wyatt for the first time two, three years ago, when he and Michael Barton came into my office. He had purchased this property, about a three-quarter acre site, one of those traditional, old, oversized properties on Rymel Road East, near Upper Gage, longstanding family, the Spinook family, that owned it for about 50 years, and obviously decided to retire and move on to some smaller homestead that they could be more amenable to their retirement years. And Mr. Blake Wyatt, who I'd never met before, and an outside investor outside of the borders of our city, purchased this property, and he courteously came with Michael to see me. And every step of the way, Madam Chair, I want to say in credit to them, they've been available over and above the call of duty. They attended a public information meeting I had, that was my own public information neighborhood meeting, that legally they were not required to attend, but they attended with me at Michelangelo Banquet Hall when I circulated the neighborhood. From their original proposal, and I'll be honest now, to digress for one moment, when they first came, and you could appreciate, and many of you probably have this, an oversized lot, beautiful, single-family home, lots of landscaping, one single family that lives on it for generations, and they wanted to repurpose it into a 15-unit townhome, executive townhome complex. My initial reaction to them, even in my office, was, gentlemen, how about you go back to the drawing board and maybe think of subdividing into three or four lovely, single-family homes, maybe some semis instead? Anyways, they came forward to that, so I made my preference initially clear to them. But to their credit, to Mr. Wyatt and Mr. Barton's credit, they thought that they could do something special with this property. And I said, well, listen, I need to consult with the neighborhood, hence Mr. Tom Tapp, who became the unofficial spokesperson on Simona Drive for the neighbors and the petitioners. And throughout the last year or so, we have been consulting back and forth, Madam Chair, and I want to give credit to Mr. Wyatt, who, hearing from the neighborhood, has made adjustments ahead of today's meeting in resubmitting revised plans. And some of these changes have been things like, he's offered to reduce the number of units from 15 to 14, which is in the amended motion. He also were, initially, all the units and the future purchasers were to, would have entered and exited off of the nice side street called Simona Drive, which would have just created, in my opinion, a horrendous traffic jam for this nice little side street of single-family homes. To his credit, he redesigned and has provided egress off of the main artery, Rymel Road, controlled right turn-in, controlled right turnout, which is incredibly important to offset any traffic on the side street. He has redesigned his complex, so now it will front onto Rymel Road as well, the main artery, instead of, if you will, overwhelming the side street of Simona. And also, to his credit, and in recent discussions this past two weeks with the deferral, which really helped out to get any one or two last obstacles over the hump, Madam Chair, he's also provided two additional visitor parking spots from five to seven, which also is in the amended motion as well. I think, I believe overall, Madam Chair, and Mr. Tapp, by the way, who could not be here today because, well, he was a volunteer citizen advocate, and vocation and family are top priorities, and work called this morning, and he emailed me around 6:30 this morning to say, Counselor, if you could convey my position in support of now this application. And he spoke to a number of his neighbors in the last 24 hours, and the neighbors he spoke to from the petition are on-site as well with the compromises that Mr. Wyatt has come forward with. I think that this could be a real special development. The value of what Mr. Wyatt is hoping to achieve once constructed and put on the market will be commensurate with the single-family homes, with this executive townhome development. So, Madam Chair, to conclude also, I want to thank staff, Anita Fabic, manager, and Yvette Robinsky, and of course, Daniel Barnett, who was the frontline staff, the planner on this file. They were, especially Anita and Yvette, were available every step of the way, including Anita in the last 24 hours, to bring everything together, and with Ida Baddooey's help, to help me with the language of the amended motion. Madam Chair, I would ask the committee, hopefully, to give full support to this application. And I'll conclude with an axiom of life that I've learned, both in life and politics, sometimes good things take time. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. So with that, we have the motion before us, amended motion. I'm just going to read out to be sure the clerk has it in the record. I don't have to read the whole motion, because we've got it before us, but just to be sure, that in accordance with subsection 3417 of the Planning Act, no additional public meeting notices required, and that the public submissions received regarding this matter supported the approval of the application with amendments. I just want to be sure for the clerk's record, because we have to add that at the end. So that's all incorporated in the amended motion, moved by Counselor Collins, seconded by Counselor Partridge. All in favor?
Carried.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. So now we are going to move on to 9-1, is tiny homes to be included in laneway housing inventory. Counselor Green, did you wish to present your motion?
I do. It's moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Farr, as a follow-up on his great work. I will read one whereas, to save everybody, and this is the whereas. At its meeting on March 1st, 2016, Planning Committee approved Ward 2, Counselor Jason Farr's following motion, that staff prepare a report and presentation to committee on the current inventory and policies related to laneway housing in Hamilton, and report laneway housing inventory PED 16200, citywide, now listed on the OBL. So I did read this in as a notice of motion, and I won't rehash it, because it's actually quite lengthy. Therefore, be it resolved, that staff be directed to recommend the laneway housing inventory follow-up report, PED 16200, for standalone units under 425 square feet within the scope of tiny homes for the purpose of detached, secured service lots that can provide future land tenure and individual ownership. Madam Chair, if I could speak to it for a moment, the first Monday in October is actually UN Habitat Day, which celebrates the work that has been done at a global level around housing policy and precarity and sustainable urban development. We recognize the three major trends in the world are war and peace, climate change, and urbanization, and we know that the first two put a lot of pressure on the third. We see that here with the multiple generations of displaced people, refugees who come to Hamilton, most recently Syrian refugees. But we also do that in recognizing that in this country, there is a growing population of internally displaced people, folks that are being pushed out of their accommodations at the lowest, deepest affordability, and into the fringes. And, Madam Chair, often the fringes look like our escarpment, our railway lines, our abandoned buildings, our bridges, and now increasingly, our public parks, where people are forced to live in the rough. It is often accompanied by complex social pressures like addictions and mental health. And for some folks, there just, there is no interest in shelters or accessing any of the services that are here. And so this project actually provides for us a consideration of the most vulnerable people in our city, recognizing the size and scope and scale of the problem, and the municipality's very limited budget to be able to respond to this. So in this way, we are removing any of the barriers that might allow for philanthropic groups and nonprofits to enter into this space, to be able to provide one small feature of affordability and land tenure for our most vulnerable people. Madam Chair, I'm happy to wait if you'd like for me to finish my remarks. Madam Chair, as you know, we are in a bind in this city, and you've heard me speak about it around this table. The housing crisis in Hamilton is very real, but I just want to go on the record to say, this is not going to solve the problem. What this will do is allow us to explore part of a housing mix that includes from precarity of over ratio of your income to your rent, all the way to couch surfing, to the folks that are living in the rough, and it just clears the way in a small way for us to do this. It's certainly an exciting project, and I think one that we'll see lots of movement on. I just want to thank staff for their work in including this. And I just also want to recognize, Madam Chair, that this particular avenue of informal settlements, dealing with people who are living in the rough, in tent cities, in really inadequate situations, Madam Chair. If I could, for a moment, just to be personal, having traveled as much as I have, I have seen folks living in refugee camps, and we have in this city, a kilometer from this very building, people living in situations that are as dire, absent of the war. But certainly not sanitary, not safe, and completely inadequate for anybody residing in this country, be they citizen or noncitizen. And so for that reason, you know, I'm asking for support, and I just want to recognize that this UN Habitat Day is tied to my trip to Quito, Ecuador, as part of the delegation for Habitat III. And you'll see attached to this motion, the new urban agenda, which we will be rolling out in this city in future dates with a housing conference here in Hamilton, to begin to look at what are commonly known as slum settlements, or tent cities, or informal settlements in our city. So it's before us, and if anybody's interested following up offline in different ways that we're going to approach this, I'd be happy to chat with you and hopefully get your support. Thank you.
I have Counselor Skelly, Counselor Farr, then Counselor Aiden Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this is a question, if I may, for the presenter. When we first spoke about this, I think it's an intriguing and very interesting proposal. My concern is that even at the 400, that's a large unit, and how unaffordable it might be for people who are strapped and are literally homeless and on the street. 250 is a fairly small unit. I mean, a shed, you know, a backyard shed, it's 10 by 10, so you're talking about just a few extra feet. Are we making them too large to make it prohibitive for the people that we're trying to help? If I may?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for that question. It's actually a great question. You'll see that current Ontario Building Code regulations limit us to 425 square feet, which are micro-type accommodations. What this motion actually does is allow staff to report back on the feasibility of anything under that. So you're quite right, in some situations where that might not be the case, where smaller units are necessary for this particular project. This allows for anything under that Ontario Building Code, but we also recognize that we don't control the Ontario Building Code. So I just want to put that out there as well, that our chief building officer is outside of our purview. This is asking for us to open this conversation up. And I also acknowledge that there's going to be complexities with that as it relates to some of the substandard existing units that are out there. So this is very specific to allow us to include it into a tiny home, to allow our staff, their experts, to come back with very specific parameters to ensure that folks that are in rooming houses in different places aren't abusing this, to legitimize inadequate housing, if that answers the question.
It does. Thank you. Through the chair, one last question. And the tiny homes movement, if you follow television, it's these, they're actually quite elaborate. This is not what you're talking, but you're talking about bare bones facility for people that are on the street.
And so, Madam Chair, again, I appreciate the question, and I think you're quite right. My intention is to remove any barriers to be able to allow the philanthropic sector, the nonprofit sector, Habitat for Humanity, options for homes to be able to provide for this. However, what this also does is include with it this growing shift towards a kind of minimalist, pared-down existence that millennials and seniors and other folks are looking at, who don't want to be tied to $600,000, $700,000 of mortgage and debt. So this actually, it opens up the market in a way that allows consumers to have choice, that those that want to sell a home and move into a smaller unit and take all the equity out of their existing homes can do so in a very elaborate and luxurious way. What it also does is provide nonprofits in the philanthropic sector to provide the bare-bones, utilitarian, well, the heat and the shelter and the security of an accommodation of a tiny home. So it actually provides both sides of the spectrum.
Thank you. Through the chair, you referenced laneways. Would this also be applicable to a large lot, without an existing structure?
I also appreciate the question. This is an amendment to Counselor Farr's work on laneway housing, which is a project that is already underway, that brings into legalization carriage homes, garden houses, things that are already in existence. My motion actually does exactly what you just said, is if you take the Habitat for Humanity example, where they buy a lot that might have three or four traditional homes, they might be able to get 20 tiny homes on the same lot, depending on what staff come back with with recommendation. So again, it kind of chips away at that deep affordability and the most precarious. So the answer is that, yes, this is in addition to Counselor Farr's work that allows for us to look at development in a way that provides space for tiny homes.
Thank you. And through the chair, my last question. And I know we have provisions within our existing legislation, bylaws, et cetera, that allow for granny suites, or is this, could you see something like this as well, aging parents, 400 square foot is actually a decent-sized property?
If I?
Through the chair, would this address that as well?
So my understanding is that under the Planning Act, section 19 allows as-of-right duplexing in these existing properties to happen. The difference is, and I think anybody can appreciate this regardless of their political spectrum, is that this allows for land tenure. So wherein, if somebody were to add on a granny suite, that's still a rental. So wherein, if somebody were to add on a granny suite, that's still a rental, and that's still good, that's still needed. My approach in this motion is to allow for subdivided lots that after, you know, five, 10, 15 years, or whatever the case may be, Habitat for Humanity model, options for home models, that folks can actually own that little piece of land that they're on, and why that's important for folks that are living in the most precarious situations is, they don't know where they're going to live, week to week, month to month. This gives them a light at the end of the tunnel that says, you know, if they go down this path that is supported by care-based, care, sorry, community-based care, that allows them to have outreach onsite and some of the different social services onsite, we know this to be the case with addictions and mental health, to be able to come to them instead of expecting them to come to these services, it will provide for that. But at the end of the day, I think the strength of this model of lifting people out of extreme poverty is the prospect of them actually owning their property.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Councillor Farr?
I want to thank the mover, thank you for the opportunity and his due diligence on this one, and leaving it as a notice of motion, because it's inspired a lot of people, whether it's social media, internally here in the building and elsewhere, to talk about this concept of tiny homes. It's funny, it's tiny homes, but for me personally, there's been a large contingent of folks meeting on this concept for probably three or four years now, and that's related only to one specific parcel in the central neighbourhood. This is a more global approach, and it's probably helpful to some of the conversations that I've had in the past, with people like the SPRC, the Good Shepherd, many staff, real estate planners, building, and others. And specific to that one site, over the years, we've had this collaboration, this conversation, moved the art sticks a little, not there yet, related to a parcel in what we call the Clarence laneway. It's actually a much larger parcel than your, what you envision as a laneway, that once had housing on it. But it's been an intriguing focus with respect to, you know, a prospect that brings ultimately, and what our mover has suggested, residents, something to own and a sense of pride where, you know, it's lacking in a lot of places. There are potential partners out there, I could also just mean to go glass half-full on where we, the outcome from this motion somewhere down the road. If we approve what's here before us today, and staff, I know will do their good work, they're out there because we've talked to them. So whether they're, and it's not just the social agencies that have sat at the table and talked to us regarding the one specific example that I give, Clarence, but there's developers interested, there are corporate interests, so from a sponsorship standpoint, and there are people in the community neighbourhood, folks that are interested. Not all, I can tell you there's been a couple since the CBC did some fine reporting on the Clarence proposal, that have called my office, that I've met near the site, and they've asked their questions. But you know, once you get the conversation going, they understand and appreciate where we're coming from, and ultimately, you know, this ideology of inclusive communities. So I'm excited on two fronts, that we can go beyond Clarence, try to look at a citywide policy here, and that this may help Clarence in the long run as well. I guess three fronts too, because we're kind of positioning this as an amendment to the laneway work that we're currently undergoing, and I think it fits perfectly. So thanks to the mover, I'm happy to second this motion, and I appreciate all the comments.
Thank you councillor Aiden Johnson.
Thank you very much, madam Chair, and I'm very grateful to councillor Green for bringing forward this creative and cutting-edge motion. The evidence about tiny homes being a good, effective win-win-win solution for urban housing challenges is now very large, from cities all over the place, and I'm delighted to see it coming to Hamilton. And there will be, there is a specific relevance in this motion to Ward 1. Ward 1 contains some spots that would be ideal locations for appropriate density in the form of tiny homes. So kudos to the mover, thank you.
Thank you councillor Collins.
Thank you. When is the report due back on laneway housing? Can I ask? When do the...
Through the Chair to the councillor. Unfortunately, I don't know, but we can get that answered to the councillor.
Okay. If Steve returns, he may have a better idea, we'll ask him then. Councillor Partridge?
Yes, thank you, madam Chair, and you know, I too am very, very supportive of the whole concept of the tiny homes and the laneway housing, and it reminds me of when Deirdre, I believe it was Deirdre Pike and Renee came in, and they did a presentation to this committee, and it was on pocket housing. And that was a few years ago, but I remember thinking at the time that that is exactly the innovative and proactive type of solution that this city needs to explore and could explore, you know, with our homeless and shelter-driven folks who just, you know, they really just need a helping hand up. And so my question, madam Chair, is with the report that is coming back through you to Anita, does it also include all different types of small housing or tiny homes, such as pocket housing?
Through the Chair to the councillor, unfortunately, I haven't been involved in the background work and the preparation of that, so again, I would either defer to Mr. Robisho when he returns, or if he doesn't, then we can provide a response via email.
Yeah, and that's fine, thank you. I'll, you know, I can certainly follow up with him myself, just to see, but you know, that whole concept of the pocket housing, you know, two stories high, four units, was, you know, quite intriguing, and I'd like to see that included. So I'm very supportive of this, and I want to thank everyone who's been working on it and bringing it forward for the city of Hamilton. I think it's very, very important for us in our future to be able to be innovative and to be able to deal with this. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Green, second time.
Thank you for the indulgence. I just wanted to go on the record to say that at the end of the month, I'll be travelling to Detroit, Michigan, to personally tour and set up conversations around CAS, Community Social Services. I will be reporting back in an informal way, and hopefully creating any linkages that I can there, or relationships that I can there for our staff that are working on this report, but they are the closest in proximity with, I think, the most like what I have in mind, in terms of how it can help shape the most vulnerable, deep affordability crisis that we have here in the city. Thank you. I'll also extend the invitation to anybody around this table, or in the media, or in the community that wants to travel to see it firsthand as well.
Thank you. With that, we have no further speakers, we have the motion duly moved and seconded, all in favour? Carrie, thank you everyone. Steve has not returned, so maybe you can have him send out an email? Madam Clerk?
I checked the OBL, madam Chair, and it's December 5th that the report...
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. So now, are there any notices of motion today? Seeing none, I have general information. I know Marty, you wanted to mention something today?
Thank you, madam Chair.
And it better be about building permits, right?
Thank you. So our general manager, Jason Thorne, has asked me to let you know about an important piece of news. A media release has gone out this morning, advising that the city has once again reached the $1 billion mark in building permits. This is the seventh out of eighth year, and sixth consecutive year, and what's most noteworthy is that is as of September 29th, so nine months, that's the fastest point in the year that the city has reached that milestone.
Excellent. That's wonderful, and, yeah. Thank you for that information, Marty, and I appreciate that it did go out publicly at 10:30 this morning, and do we see any slowing down in sight? I don't know if George can answer. George, how are things going?
Madam Chair, we are still very busy, so I haven't seen any slowdown yet, and then hopefully, we are going to a big record again by the end of the year, because compared to September last year, actually, the construction value amount is increased by around 25% to reach $1 billion at this point.
Excellent news, George, thank you so much. And George has been wonderful in helping me and my ward in getting a building permit issued for a development, so I'm very appreciative of that. Councillor Ferguson, you want to bring something forward as a non, I'm sorry, hang on a second. My apologies, councillor Farr, committee member? No, go ahead, you did have, I put you on the list, sir.
No, no, I appreciate that, I'll let councillor...
Okay, so councillor Ferguson did ask earlier if he could just make a point as a non-committee member, so I don't know if I need to move her in a second or that, or just go ahead. Go ahead councillor Ferguson.
Well, thank you, and just to go on the public record and now ask staff a question that has to do with the pending explosion of the growing of recreational marijuana. And recently, as late as Friday is the second one, I've had visits now from people who are buying up farms in the Greenbelt in Ancaster, and they're looking for my support to amend our zoning bylaw, which permits up to 2,000 square metre building, or 20,000 square feet on every farm, for the growing of marijuana. And one application, close to where I live, wants to put 75 acres into recreational marijuana, and the person that visited me Friday has bought two farms for a total of 200 acres, and they're asking me to support their application to go from, and this is putting concrete bunker buildings, this one, on prime agricultural land, that we grow food on right now. It's in the Greenbelt, but they want to put up five to start with, not one, but five, and they're wanting my support, and this scares the living daylights out of me. Farmers feed cities, this is about using prime agricultural land in the Greenbelt to continue to grow food, not grow marijuana. And that's why, when I was on planning, we put this provision in the zoning bylaw to limit them to 2,000 square metres, primarily for medical marijuana. Both of these people already have licensed medical marijuana facilities in Ancaster, but now they're looking at hundreds of acres to go in, covered in concrete, on farms, and butter road, that's middle, prime agricultural land in Ancaster. And so instead of feeding cities, we're going to make cities high using this space, and it's not like they're going to be out using conventional agricultural agreement to grow conventional food, it's going to be, in one case, it's a greenhouse, they want to put 75 acres under glass, and the other is these big concrete bunker-type buildings, which flies in the face, I think, of what the Greenbelt is trying to do. And so I just have a question for staff, I wanted to get on the public record. And of course, their defence for doing this is that what's the difference to make, whether we're going cucumbers or growing marijuana, we're growing something, it's agriculture. And it's a huge difference in my mind. And there is apparently 40 acres under glass of Flamborough that has a cucumber facility. In fact, I think they won Farmer of the Year recently, or some, they got some public recognition for this. But to try to compare that to marijuana, I have a political issue with, because that's not the purpose of the Greenbelt, in my view. So my question to staff is through you, madam Chair, and to Steve. Steve, have these individuals approached you too, and are you at all sympathetic to their argument that whether you're growing cucumbers or growing marijuana, it doesn't make any difference, regardless of what type of structure it's in?
Through you, madam Chair. As you may recall, when we brought forward the draft Medical Marijuana Zoning, Official Plan Amendment and zoning regulations, the concern that staff had was exactly what the concern the councillor was, is that we would see effectively industrial manufacturing uses in the rural area. And that was the genesis and the reason why staff recommended, and ultimately was approved by council, was a maximum size of one facility of 2,000 square metres built into both the official plan and the zoning bylaw. So you could have a greenhouse, or you know, an industrial-type building, provided that it did not exceed 2,000 square metres. We also provided flexibility in the zoning regulations, and said at that time, any existing building, whether in the rural area, could be converted to a medical marijuana facility, regardless of its size. Since then, we've had numerous applicants come, or new property owners come forward, and seeking for relief from those provisions of the zoning, official plan and the zoning bylaw. And I think we have one complete application and a second application, they're in the process of trying to get deemed complete. Their position is that based on the demand and the anticipated amount of medical marijuana that will be required, and the limited number of licences that Health Canada is issuing, it is trending towards these mega facilities. We haven't received any of that information from Health Canada, and we have concerns always with any greenhouse operations, on the effect on the environment, especially on groundwater, if there's significant water taking, or if they're using surface water for these facilities, plus there's an additional issue in terms of power, that they are, they use a lot of electricity and other power sources. So in the absence of any other information, and based on what we know right now, we stand by our current official plan policies and zoning bylaw regulations. We do have the proponents coming forward and saying they're just going to be, a greenhouse is a greenhouse, but we still need to better understand it. I think one of the applications, or one of the sites, it's heavily regulated by the Conservation Authority, so I don't think that site will be successful, and that they simply won't be able to address the Conservation Authority concerns in terms of setbacks from a provincially significant wetland and/or surface water, of course. The other site, we're just working with the applicant in terms of what would be required in order for us to understand the application from a background perspective, but based on the regulations that we put in place, we don't, we support those regulations, and we don't have anything right now on the radar screen in terms of coming forward with any changes. We are internally trying to better understand it. I think there was a lot of information was in the media in the last six months, about where Health Canada is going and how this industry is functioning, as well as some of the regulatory aspects, but in the absence of any sort of provincial or federal direction to provide some clarity on the matter, and our concerns about what does it mean in the rural landscape, if you essentially have the equivalent to a, you know, 200,000 square foot or half a million square foot building, which would be a large industrial, or you know, equivalent to like a major shopping mall pop up in the rural area, that is not what we have envisioned for the rural area, and in terms of supporting the rural economy.
Okay, so this is probably going to be a problem that's going to be popping up in a lot of agricultural areas throughout the province. From a planning perspective, is there a difference between growing cucumbers and growing marijuana?
Through you, madam Chair, it depends on the nature of the facility. So when we began this discussion, they were looking actually, with the one facility, I think, they did not want it, it was 100% artificial light, whereas, you know, most greenhouses sort of use natural light, so the, from that perspective, that would essentially be a large bunker-type building, so it would have different impacts. The other issue is the amount of water that they're using, and their water drawdown, and the nature of their systems, combined also with the electricity. So it is evolving, but I mean, we do know what the rural area is, and then how does this sort of fit within that rural area, so that's why we'd be looking for the advice of our Rural Affairs Advisory Committee, as well as that provincial direction, but we have not necessarily just taken a position. If a greenhouse was a greenhouse, then we wouldn't have come forward with those regulations in the first place, back in 2009 or 2010, when we came forward with the zoning bylaw and official plan amendments, dealing with medical marijuana.
Okay.
Also, the other direction was, we were trying to encourage these facilities to the urban area, because many of them do function effectively as a manufacturing use. The industrial zoning does permit biomedical, as well as medical marijuana uses, so that was part of the policy direction too, to encourage these to the urban area. The only cap, and we built in regulations in terms of setbacks from residential schools, and that seems to be aligning with some of the federal direction, that they not be in close proximity to sensitive land uses, but there are opportunities within the industrial area that could accommodate this use, if the decision was that the operator wanted to have a completely enclosed bunker-type facility, as opposed to a greenhouse-type facility.
So there is a difference in your mind then, from a planning perspective, between a greenhouse-type structure and all four sides locked up and a roof on it, I call it a bumper facility, there's a difference in your mind?
I think in terms of the, through madam Chair, in terms of just the visual aesthetics, the visual impact assessment, combined with some of the operational characteristics, that they don't function like a traditional greenhouse, and that's why we've differentiated the land use in the zoning bylaw. It's not a greenhouse, it's a medical marijuana processing facility. The other difference is, they're very high-secure facilities, they have to have fencing, cameras, there's a lot, different employee density, as well as they get into a lot more onsite medical research and processing and other sort of secondary and tertiary type activities that are not normally associated with a greenhouse. And then the final element is, they operate, they have daily deliveries or daily distribution leaving the facility, so it functions, it has different operating characteristics than a traditional greenhouse that might only have one or two harvest seasons, maybe three or four harvest seasons a year. This nature of this business, as I understand it, is they're almost looking to have a daily harvesting, daily processing, and daily shipping from the facility, so it operates from different land use characteristics.
Well, the two that visited me had nothing to do with medical marijuana, they're preparing for the recreational marijuana market, which they say will be explosive. And the one that I think you were saying is in the Conservation, is in Flamborough, because I heard there's another application out in Flamborough. And it would just be a tragedy to see our prime agricultural land covered with these buildings to grow marijuana, I mean, do it in Sudbury where it's all rock, you know, and don't cover up, and they're tempted to come to Ancaster and Flamborough, and probably rural stony creek too, to do this, because it's cheap land. They're picking it up for 15,000 acre, and it's going to be tempting for a lot of farmers to cash out too, because they anticipate it'll be so profitable, that they'll be able to pay significantly more than the 15,000 acre. So a final thing, Steve, is to ask you a question, so these applications that are coming in, you would not be supportive if the building's over 2,000 square metres, did I hear that?
Based on the... Based on the information and the press policies, we're not supportive of these large unrestricted uses on these facilities at this point in time. And like I said, the regular, unless something, we're still trying to get some guidance and some direction at the provincial and the federal level, but on the information we've seen today, we haven't seen any need to update or bring forward like a housekeeping amendment on our regulations. So we're going to have to look at each application on its own merits, but we're not proposing to do a general text amendment to repeal or to relax the current zoning and official plan regulations on medical marijuana.
Okay, and the last question then, you don't know whether there's, under the planning act, because it's a brand-new process, whether there's a difference between growing cucumbers or growing marijuana under glass?
Through you, Madam Chairman. Based on the discussions that we've had to date, I don't pretend to be an expert, but they do have, the greenhouses do operate differently. There's the nature of the product. A marijuana plant would be more akin, as I understand it, to like mums, where they actually have to start manipulating the light and they sort of, they start forcing the plant either to flower or not to flower at different points in the season as opposed to a traditional greenhouse. It's built to a different standard, that greenhouse operation, so it does sort of function in a different way. So it's more as to a non-food-type greenhouse as opposed to a food-type greenhouse operation. The other factor is if that is the will of the federal government as a policy direction to have a few mega facilities, then that would change the way we approach this. But at this point in time, we haven't seen anything from the federal government to indicate that. It's sort of, the analogy I would use would be the difference between the big breweries and the craft breweries. We're not sure where we're at in terms of that industry. Is it going to be a few selected big breweries or is it going to be more focusing in the craft breweries? The other concern is if they get into the different ways that the product is consumed. So if they get into a beverage industry, I'm not sure we would want to start supporting recreational marijuana greenhouses in the rural area that also morph into bottling operations where they're doing a lot of shipping that product in can, in a liquid form, and what would that mean on the natural environment as well? So there's a whole, this industry is changing daily, and as we sort of understand it, then we might have to revisit our planning position. But based on what we know or what we've seen to date, we're not proposing any changes to the zoning or the bylaw, the official plan as it stands right now in these facilities.
Okay, so I'm telling them they come to my office as the word councillor, I don't support it. I'm not, I'm not on to change wheat fields into marijuana-growing and soybeans or corn and all the other products that our farmers grow out there. Two farmers have approached me, they're worried about it. And I tend to refer this to the Agriculture and Rural Affairs Advisory Committee and the agricultural associations to start the process going, because I think it's going to be a province-wide issue, not just one exclusive to Hamilton, but they're out there buying up farms right now to get going in this. And I'm pleased that you wouldn't be supportive at this time for going beyond the 2,000 square meters. So that's all my questions, Madam Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Have Councillor Green to this item or something?
No, it's very specifically to this, and I, I put my name on the list because I always enjoy supporting fully the comments and the direction of Councillor Ferguson. In this particular case, I couldn't agree more. I think that, as you know, Madam Chair, around this table, I have consistently supported the Green Belt by objecting to and opposing any lands taken out of the Green Belt for any purpose. And I also concur that this type of industry, this cash crop, is different in the way that it's, it's produced, and I would, and I would agree that it's a type of agricultural manufacturing. I think that with our brownfields, Madam Chair, there is a tremendous opportunity with our vacant brownfields to provide adequate places that are near industrial spaces outside of communities. There's the exploration of the advancement of vertical farming as it relates to medical marijuana to use the airspace. I think that in proximity to water, I could foresee or at least hope for, or I would fully support, water usages with their own treatment facilities in place at a lead standard type of sustainable development with solar generation and wind generation and full-on independent water treatment to be able to make this industry grow. This is going to be a $15 billion market. This is going to be bigger than anything that we've seen in quite some time, and I would not want to see this industry lost to Sudbury, even given their topography. I would want to see ways that we could encourage them to stay in Hamilton, to pay taxes in Hamilton, to properly regulate and/or provide licensing or a category of, a categorization that would provide substantial revenue to the city. But make no mistakes about it, this is a commercial endeavor. It's not an agricultural endeavor, and to replace, you know, our prime greenfields with concrete bunkers, and they are bunkers, is wrong. And they're doing it for the business case, it's $15,000 an acre. Let's make them pay industrial land fees. Let's make them be a part of our brownfield remediation. Let's, you know, invite them to sit in the corridor of a transit hub that gives them access to, to the export industry that's about to happen here globally. This is going to be huge, and, and it is going to be the biggest cash crop that this city has seen in quite some time, both from an agricultural perspective and an industrial perspective. But Councillor Ferguson has brought up some very, I mean, those are very valid points. So for that reason, I would like to ask staff, in any considerations or recommendations to the province, I'm going to go on the record right now and say, demand is going to outstrip supply 100 to 1. I mean, it doesn't matter how many of these mega projects they put up, they are never going to be able to keep up with the supply for the demand of recreational marijuana. It will not happen. The federal government will be forced to open up the market and allow greater production. I just want to make sure it's not on our agricultural lands, and I want to make sure that we use it to remediate our brownfields and to tax it appropriately as commercial ventures and to, and to have them in a space where they actually have to remediate and be a part of that. So all of those things, Madam, Madam Chair, to support Councillor Ferguson's identification as this is being problematic, it's going to be hugely problematic, because they will sweep in and buy up at $20,000 an acre or $25,000 an acre. Right? Because the reality is the dispensaries are probably bringing in 30,000 a day. That's just to give you a scale and scope of how big this industry is. So from that perspective, I support his comments and hope that staff are proactive enough to create a planning process and a planning policy that would provide the best, highest use of our brownfields, as well as our ability to capture, as a revenue model, this growing industry here in Hamilton. Thank you.
Councillor Partridge.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And I too want to thank Councillor Ferguson for bringing this forward. It's something certainly that Councillor Pasuda and I have, are having to deal with, and, and it's been, it's been very worrisome. Through you, Madam Chair, to staff, it sounds to me like we need to strengthen our existing policies. Just, just to be able to take into consideration, I mean, you've, you know, we all know, and you stated that it's changing daily, the rules, the regulate, I mean, everything is changing daily. And I'm just wondering if there is an opportunity for us to, to give some thought to strengthening our existing policies. And, Madam Chair, I'll follow up with staff afterwards and just, you know, start looking at this, and perhaps Councillor Ferguson and Councillor Pasuda and I can work together on this and with staff, because I think, you know, I agree 100%. It is a problem. It is going to be a huge problem. Certainly in Flamborough and other areas of the, of the city, in our, in our rural areas, we have compromised aquifers. And, you know, our greenhouse operations, which are growing food, are hugely important to us, and we're supportive of them. They take a lot of water, but this type of operation is going to take even more water. And it's the Ministry of the Environment that issues the permits to take water, and that's already an issue. The use of tertiary systems, that is a big deal, certainly out in, in, you know, both the Flamber community, but again, citywide in the, in the rural areas. Tertiary systems are not recognized by the province. So, you know, we have some, some issues there. But I will follow up, I will follow up with staff and the councillors and just see if there is something that we can do here. I am absolutely not supportive of our agricultural lands being used for this type of operation. As was just mentioned, it is not an agricultural operation, it is an industrial operation. And it, it needs to be in the urban areas where, you know, perhaps we can accommodate it, but we need to get out in front of this. And I really thank the good councillor for bringing it forward, because, you know, this is going to take off on us very, very quickly, and we're just not prepared for it right now. So we need to get out in front of it. But I'll be following up with, with staff. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Farr.
Just a quick question from the conversation to Steve through you. Does our official plan policy distinguish between medical and recreational?
Through you, Madam Chairman. At the current time, the OP framework only allows the medical marijuana, because at this point in time, the recreational component hasn't received all the necessary federal and provincial approvals, so it's not recognized in the policy framework on the recreational aspect.
So we would need to amend, Steve, through you, to include recreational at the appropriate time?
Through you, Madam Chairman. At this, we don't really, it would either just be considered to be a retail-type use or we would have to develop a specific policy framework to deal with the recreational aspect. I think part of that is in sort of speaking with my MLE colleagues as sort of that provincial framework sort of gets crystallized, we'll have a better understanding as to how the province proposes, well, we already know in terms of the distribution of it, but it's also in that production aspect of it.
Councillor Brenda Jones.
Yep, thank you. And maybe just to recap with everyone, last term, when the, when the rules zoning bylaw came forward, the Federation of Farmers actually went through it line by line and sat down with myself and staff members and made their suggestions. And part of those suggestions were regarding greenhouses. There was no mention of marijuana-growing or anything like that, because that's not what the farmers were looking at. They were looking at best practices for farming. So there is that component in the zoning bylaw, which, Steve, you just referred to. And that was from the farmers themselves. So whether you're growing sunflowers, you're growing marijuana, you're growing cucumbers, this is what needs to happen in order for this to, to operate. The other thing that we talked about when it came forward to here, when the, and I believe it was Joanne Hickey Evans who brought it forward, and this was about the marijuana growing, it was decided and it was discovered probably more than anything that it is a factory-operated business. So the suggestion to keep it in the industrial land was probably number one, because utilities out in the rural area, any rural councillor will tell you that utilities are very fragile out there. They can go off at the blink of an eye, no pun intended, and they're not reliable. The other thing is water. Water consumption, you take water out of the ground in the rural area for large, massive, massive amounts, you drain the surrounding well water in the areas. The third thing was protection. So security is not 100% out in the rural areas, because there's acres and acres of land surrounding it, and you can come at it from all different directions. And from my own personal experience, it's the integrity of our roads. When you put a factory out in the middle of the urban boundary, within the urban boundary, on rural roads, we don't have the road structure to put up with the heavy machinery, the heavy trucks that come in and out, which is why I led the charge about the bylaw officer coming in with illegal businesses. So for those, for those reasons alone, I thought this was already cemented in. Greenhouses go to a certain size on a certain amount of property, certain land coverage. It doesn't get beyond that, in that the marijuana-growing operations were going to be encouraged, if not put into the industrial lands where they belong, for all the reasons I stated earlier, utilities, the road infrastructure, and the water protection and security. So thank you very much, Councillor Ferguson, for reiterating what I thought we already had put in place. I myself is another one. If I see a big, huge factory coming into the rural area, I put the brakes on for all those reasons that I've just mentioned. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, everyone. Good conversations all around on this item, and certainly something I'm sure staff and all the councillors have commented will certainly be keeping an eye out on. So I'm going to now move on to the ask for a motion to amend the outstanding business list that's before us, item 11-1. I just want to be sure, though, we have to correct, the new dates are February 20, 2018, not 17, on a number of them. There's only, item H is correct, the rest we have to amend. So moved by Councillor Aidan Johnsex and by Councillor Skelly, all in favor as amended. And with that, we have no private and confidential. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Councillor Collins, seconded by Councillor Connelly, all in favor. Thank you, everyone.